Good morning, everybody. We call the meeting to order. Welcome to our regular meeting of October 20th, 2015. Call the roll.
Vice Chair Plumber.
President.
Commissioner Haggis.
Here.
Commissioner Ometo.
Here.
Chairman Deacon-Horn.
President.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
We have Mitch Montoya here to lead us in a prayer. He's from the Potter's Christian House. And so if we can stand for the prayer and remain standing for the press. Good morning, Mr. Montoya.
Good morning. If we could bow our heads and pray. For the opportunity to be here, we thank you, Father, for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. We thank you for the great privilege that is given here, the ability to govern. And we ask, as the Scripture says, to pray for those who have rule over us to obey those that have rule over us. And we ask that you would give those present here today wisdom, that you would give them direction, that you would give them guidance, that you would help them to work together even through disagreements. Father, we ask right now that your blessing be upon our community, upon our come, upon our come. We ask right now that you would help us to make right decisions that would further our community. We ask, Lord, that you would give us authority, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Gentad, please, please, some prayers.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the vessel with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, we have a motion to approve or amend the agenda. I understood that we were going to amend the agenda, actually, regarding the detention center. That is at 1:00.
At 9:00 a.m., I'd like that tabled.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the agenda tabling the annual inspection of the audit of the detention center. Commissioner Romero.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I attended the NMAC board meeting in Socorro on Friday. I had a couple of items that I wanted to just go off of, Commissioner, to know about what's going on at NMAC. I don't know where we can add that.
Well, we can add that on to, we don't have a heading for commissioners' reports today, but we can amend the agenda to include it under 11, I guess.
Okay.
And make that 11C, a commissioners' report by Commissioner Romero on NMAC updates.
Thank you. I'll move to approve the agenda as amended, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Call for vote.
Vice Chair Plumber.
Yes.
Commissioner Haggis.
Yes.
Commissioner Ometo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Deacon-Horn.
Yes. On to citizens' concerns. Anyone who wishes to address the board can do so. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Mr. Cordova.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, my name is Francis Cordova. I'm with a veterans group here in Taos. We've been working on a project since 2007 on this cemetery, and it looks like it's becoming reality. So with all your support and the support of our veterans and our citizens here in Taos, basically, Carlos Cisneros has been the champ for us on this project. And we would like to thank you people for doing that for us. But there are confronting a little bit of a problem now. We have the chamiso out there that needs to be broken. And Rio Postea has approved the report to lend us their equipment to break the chamiso now, and we have to do it before the ground freezes, or else in that way we could put our grass to germinate. Also, if we don't do it now, we won't be able to join the spring with their equipment, because they use their equipment at this time for their own use. But we really appreciate the efforts of Mr. Steve Trujillo for going to the board and asking for this equipment. And we had talked to the former county manager, Steve Trujillo, in July to see if we would get this approved by the commission. But I guess, being that he was gonna be leaving the county, it never conspired, I guess. But we have been working with the new manager, the assistant manager, on this project. And we did go to the, they told us we could get a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers to be able to break the chamiso. And yesterday, I met with Mr. Steve Trujillo, and we called the people from the Army Corps of Engineers, and they said, "You guys don't need a permit for to break that chamiso." But I don't know, but other permits we do need to get this project on its way. I know that our veterans are very excited to be able to bury their own and for their loved ones can visit their previous sites here locally. You know, it's very hard for our veterans to go all the way to Santa Fe or during the winter months, go to Angel Fire. Right now, we met with Jack Fox, who is the Secretary of Veterans Affairs, and Steve Arjuteta, the county manager, also made with us up there. And they put us on the list to become a veterans-funded cemetery. But we're number 10 on the list, and at least we're on the list, and we're trying to do everything right, apply regulations, so that when they transfer it to the federal government, we don't have anything to, you know, that'll stop this cemetery from becoming a federal cemetery.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova. Mr. Cordova, how can we get this done before the chamiso freezes?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have been looking into the permits that are required in the process. It is true that there is not a permit required by the Army Corps of Engineers, however, there is a permit required for the EPA. Mr. Richard Sanchez has been doing a little bit of homework for us this morning and yesterday afternoon, to try and see how long that process will take and if there's any exceptions to the process. We certainly do support the project. This is a very important project, and management is a full supporter group. With that said, we don't want to make any missteps, and we don't want to do something without following the right process, especially in the eyes of the federal government, EPA, if we're trying to get that designation. And so that's why at this time, we've been waiting and pushing them on to get that permit and see how long it will take, or an exception to the permit, before we start reading that thing.
Well, can we get the information from the EPA, J.A., and in your report at the end of the meeting, you can fill us in.
I will do our best to do that. That is kind of the approach you would like to take. There are, we are moving along, and during my report, you will see some of the artist's additions, designing ideas for the front entryway, the gated entry, and the front fence. So we are moving along with the design and moving forward with how we're gonna be spending on capital appropriations. We just wanna make sure that we do follow every step, and we do things right.
Yeah, no, I know we're moving along, and I appreciate it, and, you know, good work on the design, but, you know, this is time-sensitive. I can't imagine that EPA permitting process for cutting the chamiso would be complicated, but it would just take a phone call and a conversation to find out the details, unless Commissioner Plumber knows.
No, I don't know anything about EPA. I know they stopped us from burning houses for practice. Can I question this? Is the issue, if we clear the sage, is there a flooding issue in that area, or drainage issue created? And also, if there's a problem with EPA, possibly, because when myself and Commissioner Ometo met with Congressman Lupon about this, he's very supportive, and maybe he could help, Chris, to help us get things moving on that side, since they moved the city over times too generally.
The idea is to cut the sage and plant some natural grasses there, and of course, as they take hold, that would certainly help absorb and water. But like I said, I just want somebody to make the phone calls today and find out, so we can know the answer to this one.
Mr. Chairman, if I could propose another angle. I know that throughout the state, and in other states, counties own cemeteries, and many of them are not necessarily designated as veterans' cemeteries, but I wonder if we could look into the idea of possibly establishing that cemetery. What are the requirements for any entity to establish a cemetery in the state of New Mexico? I know that you have to follow various procedures, but in an effort to move it along, maybe we could take on that angle to start with, and then later on, I know that there's an urgency from our veterans in Taos, and, you know, many of them who pass on are in fact taken to Santa Fe and their wishes were to be buried in the new cemetery in Taos. So if there was a way to be able to create that cemetery at this point, and then later on, give it that official designation, I wonder if that is something that is possible.
Chairman, Commissioner Romero, as you may recall, Mr. Arjuteta did have those similar conversations with the board, commissioners, but more of that issue became an anti-donation issue. So if we established a cemetery, we would have to charge the veterans for the burial, and that's why we're going the federal designation route, so that way there wouldn't be no charge to the veterans.
Maybe perhaps in order to address that, we could, or someone could establish a fund to be able to pay for those, and then that fund would go away once we know that veterans can be interred there, free of charge. Just thinking of different ways to, I'm sure it would be very easy to establish a fund based on donations if Mr. Cordova and the group here today could do that, they could concentrate on establishing the fund, if the county had to establish a dollar amount for those burial plots.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, that's something I can definitely look into, do some more research. I know Mr. Arjuteta did go down that road, so I'll start by looking at what he had come across, like you were doing that donation issue myself, but that funding may be around that, so I will do some more homework and look after the commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Haggis. Thank you guys for coming. I wanna say that I think what we need, I would expect that we can move along with is, if we get the permit from EPA, they'll discuss that flood issue in the near future, or what they're gonna look like. But I would ask that we give direction to our administration to, if all ducks in a row, if we approve, if Rio Postea brings the equipment in, gets it done as soon as it can, as there is a clean order, so we don't have to prolong for another two weeks to approve this. I think it's the time is of the essence, as you said earlier, but, you know, I don't want us to be waiting for the permit to come in. I mean, we expect that the permit will come through, and the next step is to go ahead and let them break ground and break that chamiso, and then go from there. I just don't want to see us waiting for another, you know, step down the road, and then it comes November 15th, and we're still waiting.
I agree. Commissioner, we can't vote on it, because it hasn't been noticed, but I could agree more. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I wanna make sure that we're following NIPA, and has there been any archaeology studies of that area, because we hate to uncover gray sites or something. So, Mr. Cordova, if you could check if we have to follow, do an archaeology survey? I don't know if that's been done. And then my question, if the land is cleared, are we gonna be paying for the grass? How would that, would they clear it, and then they also seed it?
Right. What's going on right now, the missionaries, we have funding from, funding that we got from Carlos Cisneros, and there's no charge for the breaking of chamiso with Rio Postea. In fact, the veterans, this group here, is gonna pay for the diesel, and Mr. Trujillo has gotten the operator from Rio Postea to do the job. That way, he knows his equipment, and there's no charge there. But for the diesel equipment, we are taking care of that, and the grass will come out of general.
We have to hire someone to put a seed down?
Right, yes. Also, we had a land survey by the Soil and Water Conservation, Mr. Vehil, Peter Vehil, and he's an expert on soil and water, and he says that there was no permits required to break that chamiso, and he's an expert on that. He's been doing this, and he says that they've broken several areas, Postea, Las Colonia, I don't know if you're aware of that, Vicente Estevan, and also Mr. Martinez, Toby Martinez, and they did not require any permits to break that chamiso.
Yeah, I know lots of people that break chamiso to try and introduce the natural grasses that haven't gotten any permits. I'm sorry, Mr. Howard, what do you think?
Chairman, just a more clarification, Soil and Water Conservation, they would donate the grass to the project. So they had it on their agenda last week. Mr. Vehil was expecting a vote in the affirmative, and they had paid for the cost of the grass.
All right, great. And we have our Richard Sanchez here, who's our construction expert. Richard, come on up and tell us that we don't need a permit to approach our chamiso.
Commissioner, Chairman, Commissioner, I wish I could say that you absolutely don't need a permit, except that you don't need a permit for agricultural purposes. A cemetery is considered a construction project. EPA requires swift plans for every construction project over one acre. They do have exemptions for, or variances for small projects, one to five acres. They also have, if we are, I spoke with the surface water department this morning. If we don't disturb the soil in the sense to grade it, we can probably, and we can talk to them some more, but we can probably do it without a permit. If we're gonna break the sage, rush, plant it, and grade it, bring it to final grade, then we will have to sweep. And I'm talking to a company to get an idea. Stormcoats, a company we used here in our complex to protect the Rio Fernando, and it's an ongoing plan that's required for construction projects. So there's a possibility we don't need it, but the likelihood is that we probably do. And it's electronic fighting and whatnot, so it should be pretty quick, but.
You said, "and grading," is there any plans to grade, or are we just talking about cutting the chamiso and spreading the seed?
That's our organic.
So there's no grading?
No grading whatsoever.
Okay, just so that everybody knows, I hate doing things twice, that's why I was commenting about the grading. The other thing is, are you gonna do the whole 20 acres for?
Twenty acres right away.
Okay, so that may push it over the limit, because it is a construction project. Like I said, let me continue with my research, and hopefully my managers will report us more answers for it. But generally speaking, any construction project over one acre requires a swift plan.
Okay, well, just make sure they know that all we wanna do is cut chamiso on 20 acres and spread seed.
I understand. Fines can be as high as $30,000 a day for violations on swift plans. Don't waste anything on fines.
Just to be clear. Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have any more questions, Commissioners? I just wanna thank this group of veterans that are here, sitting with us, working it out, and I wanted you to address this, that these veterans have been going with me to the legislature and out of their own nickel, okay? Nobody has ever got reimbursed for this. We think that it's a great project and a great service to our community and our veterans. And I wanna thank you people for taking the time to hear our concerns.
And we wanna thank you, too. We wanna thank all of you for coming, for your service as veterans, and for your service now to the county in helping us get this done. We really appreciate it. Mr. Trujillo is from Rio Postea, and he's the one who has made sure that we had the equipment, and of course, Mr. Coca and Mr. Gentad are well-known to us all.
Now, Mr. Steve Trujillo with Soil and Water Conservation, also, so he's here on behalf of veterans and also the Soil and Water Conservation.
And thank you, too, Steve, for showing up and for working with the veterans to get this done.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we also need, we have gotten approval from Steve Arjuteta to move the equipment from Rio Postea to Taos with county equipment. And they had talked to Mr. Salazar, and that had been approved, and maybe, Mr. Cordova, if you can follow through with that, so it can be approved, so we can get that equipment over here.
Of course, Mr. Salazar is aware, and I believe he has a tiny face, so he can do work with them to make sure that we are able to get it through.
Great. Ralph Sal.
Ralph Sal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like we just need to answer this one question about whether we need a permit or not, and then if we do need a permit, how long will it take to get it? So we'll try to get that information today.
I really appreciate your support. Thank you.
And if you guys don't wanna stick around for the whole meeting, certainly, I understand. But we will get you the information. Thank you very much.
Now, thank you, and I have followed up with the county in Taos. Have you heard of that?
Yes, I have heard of that. But we'll look forward to it this holiday season. Thank you, Mayor. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the board at this time? Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Probably started to sound like broke the record, but I wanna talk a little bit about animals in our spay-neuter program from October 9th to the 10th. We did, the October 9th here in Taos, we filled up, I think there were 26 dogs that were spayed and neutered in cooperation with 400 Animal League and Santa Fe Animal Shelter, as well as Stray Hearts and other organizations. And then on the 10th, in Qusta, with the assistance of the Questa Friends Animal Fr-.
Friends of the animal.
I always get that mixed up. But Jim Vaughn and his crew from up there, we successfully did 23 animals there. We actually had, and that's a little off of what we had, we had two no-shows and six on the standby list that simply weren't able to come in. So I count those both as a huge success, and then report to constituents and yourselves that in addition to that, in this past year, the Taos feline friends, feral freeline friends have spayed and neutered 370 cats as of two weeks ago. They only do cats in the community, they don't do dogs, and many of these are either strays or feral cats that are captured, trapped, given their vaccinations, spayed, neutered, and released back, given to the community to assist in the rodent population and stuff like that. Tremendous, tremendous amount of numbers there, so I'm very happy about that. This is the last one of those initiatives for this year, and I look forward to picking it off again in the spring. Thank you guys for your support and additional monies that you put into this budget, so we can make that happen.
Thank you, Sheriff, too. And when we do it in the spring, let's remember to do it with purchasing licenses, so it's a free spay-neuter if you purchase your license, because otherwise, so far, there's not a lot of people running into the county to purchase licenses under the new ordinance.
No, not yet, but, you know, I looked back on the radio this morning, we talked about that initiative and so forth. The clerks got the applications for that, and our animal patrol officer, we have two now, Joseph started yesterday, Joe Medina, we'll be very happy to have him on board. We anticipate his training in a couple of weeks, and then he'll be out, continuing the educational process as we move forward into the enforcement side of the animal control ordinance. So I'm very, very pleased to report that as well, and yeah, again, just thank you guys for the true support. I think this is key to our success in reducing animal population.
We've been at it a long time. I'm optimistic about our plan going forward.
Yeah, and as Mr. Hameo just pointed out, for everybody to know, the animal control ordinance did go officially into effect yesterday, so we're heavy into the educational process on that for the next few months, and then move into the next phase of it.
What does it cost to license your dog?
It's $10 per companion, yeah.
Two years.
Two years, $10. And then if you have breeders permits or multiple, there's additional cost to that. And Stray Hearts, I need to report, I'm very pleased with their partnership in, now that animals are brought in, they also have the applications, and they're going to work with release and varietal control to get those people to, the owners, to register their animal with the county prior to release. So, you know, I think we've got several initiatives open to work on. Well, time will tell, we'll tailor it as we move along as we run into some of the books. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, is there anybody else? Yes, sir. Is Steph in voting and saying her name?
My name's Bruce McIntosh, and here as a secretary of Citizens Advisory Committee on the Taos County Detention Center, and I didn't see anything about the resolution on the agenda, so I was just curious as to whether that's something that's gonna happen at next meeting, or where we're at for that.
Sir, we did not put the resolution on the agenda, and I'm sorry, I thought we had put, for discussion of the resolution, we're still in the stages of discussion. The resolution as presented to us needed some work and some pointy tuning, and so I apologize, I guess we didn't put the discussion on, or is it on?
It's 11A, discussion and direction to staff. It's a possible creation of a detention center.
Oh, my. County managers report at the end, I will be asking for some discussion about it. We're gonna go ahead and go over some of the issues we did have with the resolution as presented, and try and frame something that will, you can present to the commission for approval by a legal date.
I understand. Great, thank you.
Excuse me, Bruce, I just wanted to continue with what was the honor bestowed on you two weeks ago. Bruce was honored as one of our Anson Heroes for Taos County for this past year with his work with kids and Metameter and everything, and it was very appropriate that you be honored, and thank you for your just work and.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just to point out, Mr. McIntosh, we have canceled that jail tour, just so you know, so we should move, hopefully move through, thanks to other quickly today.
Is there anybody else at this time who would like to address the board? If not, then we'll move on to item number six, which is minutes approval of the minutes from the October 6 regular meeting, Commissioners. Vote for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have a second half, but I do have several amendments to the minutes, if I may.
Go ahead.
On page 11, where it was said, I said, "Fought in court for years," if it happens, it should say, "Years until it passes in Congress." On page 15, it should read, Commissioner Candace O'Donnell stated she was sworn by an oath of office to uphold the New Mexico Constitution, which includes the Treaty of Guadalupe Hildago. It is in the Constitution, and it is in the issue. The record had stated that the New Mexico Constitution says Taos County will uphold all treaties, and I need to strike that, because that is not what my intention was in making that comment about, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, with those amendments.
So, Mr. Chairman, I will restate my motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. I'll second. Any discussion? It's called for vote.
Vice Chair Plumber.
Yes.
Commissioner Haggis.
Yes.
Commissioner Ometo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, on 6B, which is. Yes, on 6B, which is a decision regarding approval of the October 14 special meeting minutes.
Motion to approve. I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blackenham.
Yes. Onto seven contracts. A, this is a discussion decision regarding approval of the community DWI project agreement. And this is a grant fund that's used to purchase equipment for law enforcement agencies in Taos County. Good morning, Mr. Rodeo.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, Mr. Malone and County Manager, Mr. Cordova. I'm here today presenting this on behalf of Mr. Herbert Valdez, our coordinator for DWI program. My name is John Rodeo. I am the DWI compliance supervisor. Today, I'm requesting the community DWI grant to be approved by the commission. The amount is for $6,675. The money is a $75 fee that's imposed by convicted drunk drivers, which was allowed by the New Mexico statutes, 1978, section 3112, 7B, and NMAC 18.20.6. These funds are to be used by each county if they apply for them, which that's what I'm doing today, for law enforcement to be used for cameras and recorders, whichever they may want to use it in each division. We divide this money equally to all the law enforcement divisions that we have here. There are three original copies that need to be signed and approved today, and that is my request.
Vote for approval, Mr. Chairman, second.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blackenham.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have. May I be excused, Mr. Chairman?
You bet.
Thank you. Under eight resolutions, discussion decision regarding approval of resolution 2015-54 to authorize and approve submission of an application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority. Good morning, Nathan.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, can I approach your seat?
Please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Mr. Cordova, Mr. Malone, the members of the public. Resolution 2015-54 is for permission to submit an application to the New Mexico Finance Authority for financial assistance in order to update the 2004 Taos County Comprehensive Plan that was adopted by resolution in June of 2004. The amount of the grant is for $50,000. The funds will be appropriated to work conjuctively in hiring a planning consultant per the Taos County Procurement Policy and Procedures. Taos County's match will be to assist with administration of the grant, administrative support of public meetings, organization of information that is compiled, and GIS mapping support. The planning process will involve public participation, including neighborhood associations and the planning commission. A letter of support was submitted to the New Mexico Finance Authority by Ponto as the finance director of the New Mexico Economic Development Department. I stand for questions.
Mr. Chairman, is this going to be sufficient monies or is there going to be match funding needed for Taos County?
Our match will be administrative support, and I will be actively working on the project. And I'll also be assisted by our kinder tool. Again, it will be supervised by the director.
Because in the past, it's cost us, cost the county about $100,000 in over, so just wanted to.
And we're partnering with other agencies on this project. Green Trip, I believe, is going to help support us in this area.
Moving for approval, Mr. Chairman, of resolution 2015-54.
Second.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blackenham.
Yes.
Thank you. B, this is discussion decision regarding approval of resolution 2015-55, suspending the $5 minimum penalty on the linked property taxes and imposing a statutory civil penalty for tax year 2015. Our county treasurer, Commissioner Trujillo, will present this to us in a minute.
Mr. Chairman, move that we amend the agenda so that we can listen to other items while Mr. Trujillo comes in. I'm going for that.
Okay. Motion to amend the agenda to move 8B down to 8B.
And that was like a second, but different. So I'll second.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. Call for vote.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blackenham.
Yes. Onto item C, which is now item B. And this is a discussion regarding approval of resolution 2015-56 to authorize the disposal of personal property. This also be Phil, our purchasing officer, and Alicia, our today assets manager. Good morning to you both.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Before you is resolution 2015-56, asking for disposal of all the items listed behind it. It's probably about, what, seven, eight pages? These are items that are either located, they will already that are broken, no longer worth using or worth any monies. And also other items that have to be disposed of or taken off our inventory assets listing that has been on there for the last two years that we were unable to get off till now. So we are asking approval of this resolution so we can start the process of sending it to our state auditor's office and moving forward.
Great. Commissioners?
Any idea what the value of it is at this point?
All these items that are listed, none of them have any estimated value or worth anymore. A lot of them are just old discs that we had taken on from the old complex that now, you know, after numerous years we've been in this new complex, some of the items have returned back that we've been utilizing so we wouldn't have spent money on new furniture. But almost everything over there is either broken or can no longer be used. It's just really old and just bad furniture. It's just not even worth selling. You probably won't get anything for it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it really shows value. What's left is the worst of the worst. I mean, we've already pretty much picked everything clean that had any value or any use for life. And what's left is just needing to be pretty much disposed of.
Mr. Chairman, it might be historical memorabilia that former employees might want to eat that chair that they had. It's part of their history with Taos County. No, kidding.
They were really turning us at the landfill and they couldn't clean it at Taos County.
Commissioner Fambro.
Motion to approve resolution 2015-56.
I'll second.
And I do have just a quick question. How are you going to dispose of it?
It will be disposed of after, what we do is we submit this into our state auditor's office, and if we get no response within 30, we should wait about 45 days just to ensure. And then at that point in time, we coordinate with solid waste. And we actually take photos as we're going along with it because the state auditor, or even when we get out to, we have to show how we dispose of it properly, of any county government property. So we take pictures as it's being thrown into the dumpster and so forth, and then when it gets disposed of, when they're at the line of death. And we get, we make sure we get the ticket from solid waste showing that it got disposed of and how much weight was disposed of over there.
Mr. Chairman, I just thought of something else. Are there any other non-profetities that might be interested in any of this stuff?
Right now, I know the first couple of years, we had given a lot of either other governmental, really nonprofit at this point in time. In order for us to even do that, we would literally have to put, and I hate to say it this way, but it really is junk, it's no good. We would have to put it out to ashes twice before we can even consider giving it to a nonprofit at this point in time. And right now, I don't think those items would even be worth doing that. Time, energy be wasted.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion? Not called for vote.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blackenham.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask also a question?
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I noticed there are, what, over a dozen junk cars in the road mechanic yard. What's going to happen to those? Are you going to sell those for scrap? How long are those going to remain in the yard?
We actually are. We pretty much talked to several times. Unfortunately, those were the few that were left that we were unable to sell. So at this point in time, we're just kind of waiting and working together with Public Works to see, to take it out, to get the best price we can for scrap metal for those items. Because they're basically just the body of the car, the chassis itself, and there's really nothing in it. A lot of them have been picked clean either by the sheriff's department or the departments for parts back in the day. So it's basically a home yard, but that eventually will be getting cleaned here before June, I hope. We're just waiting on pricing as well at the metal scrapyard because it has gone down. And we want to make sure we get the best price we can for that metal scrap.
Mr. Chairman, that's basically what I was going to say, Commissioner O'Donnell. Public Works is hoping to get the best price for that scrap metal because it goes back in their budget. We're going to go ahead and give it to them towards equipment if it's theirs, if it was the show-offs, if we put it back in their budget for motor vehicles. So we're hoping to get the best price on scrap and coordinating it and get it all done at once.
Thank you.
Understandable.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the cleanup.
Trying, trying. We still have a lot more coming your way.
Okay, good. All right, on to item D, which is now C. And this will be a decision regarding resolution 2015-57, authorizing county manager and chairman to sign official documents between Taos County and a non-metro area agency on aging. Morning, Mr. Trujillo, our senior program director.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This resolution is part of an RFP packet that we are having to apply for for the next four years. I've been working on a four-year area plan for the next four, for the next cycle. AAA has placed these programs out for RFP. So every county, every county in the state is going to, or every program in the state is going to have to apply for this RFP. So really, there's no guarantee we'll get this program next year unless we submit the RFP and follow the process that we have to. Just to let you know, the state has placed a cap on, placed a cap on services. And that might hurt us a little bit. We're trying to work with finance and the industry to try and figure out a reasonable way so that we can continue to provide services. And then I'll give you just an example, a meal that the state was paying $7 to us for is now at $4. So we have to make up the difference somewhere. So this RFP packet is part of that inclusion. So we're trying to figure out ways to, to make sure that we continue to provide services. So, and this resolution will allow our county manager and our chairman to sign off on every document that's applicable within AAA and our contractual obligations, so.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blackenham.
Yes.
I have a question. Mr. Cordova, have we accounted in our budget for the difference in compensation from seven to four?
This year's funding, I believe, is okay. We already have a budget approved, and the budget isn't going to change for this year. I think that's going forward in the future years. You did budget more county general fund this year than we had in the past because we didn't get the $30,000 we typically get from the town and tops. So this year, the county has committed nearly $60,000 in general fund money to senior program, up from about $15,000 a year ago. So we are doing our best to make our commitment to the seniors to meet the differences in the budget. It is a little unfortunate that they're capping the revenue that they're giving us, and we will continue to do our best to fight for more money. There certainly is a lot more services we could provide if we only had more money to give to the services.
But even if you continue the services that we are providing into the following years, probably going to, we're probably going to require more than the $60,000 we've allocated this year.
Yes, or we will be required to cut services. Unfortunately, that's the bottom line.
And just to give you an idea, we, last year, we served 66,600 meals, which was an increase over our units from the previous year by about $6,000 or $7,000. This year, we're on the verge of doing, even going further on our concrete home-delivered meals. Like David was saying, with everything, it depends on funding availability. The seniors deserve the services, but the state has placed an emphasis on trying to get providers to put more into the funds.
Commissioner Gagos.
Mr. Chairman, on the servicing seniors, the food, where does it come from?
We purchase, we have a contract, a CES contract that we, that we purchase our food that's delivered to our recite by Noble Cisco. We have a budgeted, we have money in our budget to, to purchase those items. We have an SIP funds, and then we have state funds that we utilize to, I think last year we spent approximately $150,000 in food purchases. And we average a $1.79, a $1.79 cost per plate, raw food cost average. We average a 22% food cost average, which is pretty, pretty awesome. I guess that's why the state recognizes this last, this last fiscal year. But unfortunately, because of cap, this is one thing I mentioned to AAA, is that if you guys factor in that caps will cost them inflation, it costs the food, it costs the labor, it costs them everything, and their answer is basically, you all need to figure that out, and you guys need to come up with a plan to, to accommodate for any differences, per se.
Mr. Chairman, the reason why I asked is, is there a possibility of us looking into during the season of buying from our local growers all the produce that might be?
What we're doing now is we're getting a lot of donations from our local growers for produce. And we get a lot of money donated at each site, which really helps our food cost purchases. So another thing we get is quite a bit of volunteer services. Last year, we logged over approximately 5,000 hours of volunteer and community service hours. So that helps our, our costs a little bit. But regardless of the fact that we still have to provide services and they're increasing, Taos County is increasing in seniors, seniors, the senior population of Taos County is increasing. And with that, we have to provide services based on the older Americans Act to continue, and we have to have funds to do that. So, so that's something that the commission and our manager, I know he's looking into it, but that's something that the commission want to keep in the back of their minds for the future, that cost of services ain't going to decrease, it's going to probably increase.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gagos, we also do purchase some produce, obviously, we have a few.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Local produce, or not local, but fresh produce or fresh food comes.
And we went up for the quotes on that one, but thank you, I missed that one.
Commissioner Gagos says I need to support this program considering how old I'm getting here, but actually, Bob's a little smart.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I agree with Commissioner Gagos that we should make any, every effort to contract with local produce growers. I had talked about this with Mike, and actually, the year before, sent out kind of a packet to see if anybody would be interested. Of course, at that point, no one was, but if we had to put a little more money in the budget to have nutritious, locally grown food that would also benefit our farmers, I would like the commission to, sometime before spring, weigh in on this again and see where everybody stands. Because I think that we should at least make another effort. There are a couple major growers that might be able to accommodate us during the season. So, and one is up in Serra, largest vegetable producer in the county. But as more people farm, they may want to do this. So I'm really hopeful that you can revisit this if that's a commission wish.
And Commissioner O'Donnell is correct, and I have talked to local, we did send out some information, but never received it responsible, local growers. We did receive one individual who, from the farmer's market, that wants to, to donate produce to us and things. But, but I agree, I think we should try to keep our, our services in Tallas County to promote our charities and stuff and things. So I think that's an important point, that we should concentrate on personally food in our areas.
Thank you. Well, obviously, the costs are changing, so maybe in the strategic plan or sometime in the future when we address this locally grown issue, we can also look for some. You can, you can let us know what the potential sources of funding are and what the potential impacts on the following year's budget is going to be, so we can keep that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to congratulate Mike for receiving the Outstanding Achievement Award to the Tallas County Senior Program, Most Improved Senior Center Program in Delivering Quality Services to Senior Citizens. And you just got this last week from New Mexico Aging.
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell, every agency on aging.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mike, it's mine.
No, I don't know, it's too early.
That was mine. It was a well-deserved award, Mike. We really appreciate it. What you've done with this.
And actually, it's all a team effort. I did send out a press release, I don't know if you received it, but it was all a total team effort by county staff, county management, everybody pitched in. And our staff at each site has worked diligently and God has not abom, beyond the call of duty. And without their support, their help, we couldn't get any of these things done. And especially our volunteers in community service and our seniors, of course. Without them, we wouldn't have a program. So, thank you.
Thank you. Proud of the program. On to item D, Discussion Decision Regarding Approval of Resolution 2015-55. And this is to suspend the $5 minimum penalty. Vote. We already did that one. We changed B to D. So we will have this decision regarding this resolution, and it is to suspend the $5 minimum penalty under legal property taxes and impose the statutory civil penalty for the tax year 2015.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioner. Ma'am, straight to the stand. Again, this is an early resolution that, again, to suspend the $5 minimum penalty on delinquent property taxes and imposing the statutory civil penalty for tax year 2015.
So we have to do this every year?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Vice Chair Fendro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gago.
Yes.
Commissioner Ometo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blakenham.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. On to budget matters. Item 10, First Quarter Financial Review. Ms. Lupe Martinez, our interim financial manager.
Thank you.
Make sure she gets this right.
I know, because you're going to get it really fast this morning. Caught me off guard here. So we'll go ahead and start off the presentation. I want to just let you guys know that this is the first time I'm addressing you guys' financial statements, so just be patient with me. If you have questions, I'm sure I'll address them when we get to the right one. So just be patient, but you can ask questions as you wish.
Thank you. Thank you a little bit.
Oh, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and pass out something I wanted to share. I made a dig so we can all understand.
Thank you. Thank you for picking of our, our commissioners. What was that?
It's a document. Well, it's the first quarter, and so the number, the projections are coming in as projected. We let this think a little bit longer, but the first part of the presentation is basically going over the general fund. And the way I have it broken down is basically a graph, an illustration to identify each of the quarter endings. So September 30th being the first quarter ending. Still thinking? Well, let me just explain to you the handout I provided you. So the lien is on the cash balance reserve, so we have the 3/12 reserve requirement from local government to the end. It's based on our expenditures, so that's why I have the top portion broken down, so we have 10,000 and the 810,000 dollars in expenditures. Our 3/12 reserve requirement is based on that. So our 3/12 reserve requirement is the $2.7 million. Tallas County's general fund and cash balance for 2016 is the 5.4. So I wanted to show you this illustration basically just to identify that. We are operating on a 6/12 reserve, and that's the reason why I did this presentation. Ending 9/30, we are at $4.0 million, which is about 4.5/12 reserve requirement. So we're doing that as far as keeping the cash balance. We won't start getting any of the big revenue until we start collecting the property taxes, which Susan mentioned will be around November 10th, with penalty being after the December 10th time period.
So by year end, do we expect to have how many 12ths by year end after the property taxes?
After the fiscal year ended yet?
No, it's just calendar year.
Mid-year?
Yeah, mid-June.
We'll probably replenish it right away back to the 6/12 again, I'm thinking.
Okay, so if you take out all of the ups and downs and you just kind of get a mean, is it, is it running 6/12ths, really?
Oh, between 3 and 6/12ths.
Because of the low.
Probably, actually, probably between 4 and 6/12ths. Then I think usually that was 4/12ths. Then at the end of this first quarter, which is one of our low points.
And so if our, if it's this commission's plan to, to leave 4/12ths, then there's some difference there that we can, that we can spend.
You can say that word. It's all right.
Right, to utilize the taxpayers' money.
Mr. Chairman, this is our low point, so if we're looking pretty good at getting the first quarter, that is typically the low point on cash flow for the county based on our collections not beginning till the end.
And it's currently at 4/12ths.
Like 4.5/12ths.
It's a good low point to have.
Considering that we just have that new tax increment that came into place, we are collecting on that. The first couple of months, we didn't collect until the September. So we did get our first disbursement regarding the new charities that came in, and we'll get to that once we get this presentation opened.
Commissioner Fendro.
It's a GRT question. Can we get into that if technology ever?
It's only like 58 pages, it's not that big.
Because I know that the Tosh, Tosh two of the last three months have had significant increases in their GRT. The last month, though, we had a pretty dip, so I'm wondering if we're seeing the same stuff.
We are seeing the same, and a goal with that one.
And we, we're seeing the first two.
Mr. Chairman, we've been seeing an increase as well, and one thing I find noted was that the ski valley is finally seeing their increase. And it was last month they doubled their income from about $40,000 to $96,000, which is, I think, finding the results of their construction and the tid project.
Yeah, it's your, it's your computer, not another one's.
Is it annoying yourself?
It's got to be that. Comes right up on the app.
Oh, do you guys, can you guys actually see it, then I can start going through excitement in my version?
Yeah, go ahead and proceed, Ben.
Okay, so I'll just open it and start off on the first slide, which is basically the general fund comparison.
There you go.
Okay. So now I can click it open. Okay, so this is the first slide, and this is general fund comparison. And so what we did is we took the liberty of providing you three years of actuals and the current actuals where we're at. This isn't actuals from fiscal year end, this is actuals only for the first quarter. So we'll start off looking at 2013, where we had a beginning cash balance of the 6.4. We brought in revenues of the $714,000. And then the ending cash balance at that time period was a 3.8. Then in fiscal year 14, we had about the same cash balance, the 6.4. We had revenue of 615, so we did see a decrease there. We had an ending cash balance at the first quarter of that time of 4.3. Next, the 15 budget, we started off with a smaller cash balance. We brought in more revenue and we had a cash balance of the 4.1, so basically a little bit lower than the previous year, but still significantly higher than the first 2013 year. This current year in 2016, we started off with a 5.4 beginning cash balance. As you can tell, the revenue increased, and that's where we see the GRT increment effect. So we brought in the $1.037 million. And we have the ending cash balance at the 4.048, which is about 4.2/12, which is where we're at right now. The month of October is tricky because we have three pay periods, we have other expenses that we're going to. So we are going to dip a little bit prior to that 4/12ths. But like I told you, by November 10th, when we start collecting the property taxes again, that money will be replenished and will be higher than what it is right now, which is kind of like 30 for us. So the next page of it is basically just like an income statement, just you can kind of see where we're at compared to last fiscal year, to this fiscal year, again, ending with 9/30. So the first part of it is the 9/30 numbers, and that's where you'll see the GRT. It's the $175,000 versus last year when we had $76,000. So the total revenue this year is the 1.037, whereas last year it was $870,000. We've had some activity this year on the operating expenses, and this is just a comparison. I'm not going to go through the detail individually by department, but this is just basically, as you can see towards the end of the slide, is the surplus deficit. Right now, from last year to this year, we're at the 1.4. And previous year, we were at 1.5, so we're a little bit better there, about $113,000 difference. So basically, we're nearing last year's budget, if you think of it, other than we're receiving more revenue. The next slide is basically going over the Tallas County, the revenue budget for the general fund only. This is where you'll see the Treasurers Office, I guess, decided to separate out the new GRT increment, but on the actuals part of it, you'll see the 9/30, 2014, then you'll see the 2015 year. Right now, we're like 21.9%. If you add them up together and divide it by what we actually projected for the GRTs coming in, general fund GRTs is a little bit lower than projected, only because it's the first quarter and the first couple payments that we received for the new increment got deposited into the prior account until the September 18th. Did you guys want to go over the detail, what we brought in, or do you guys can verify and see that it's basically coming in year on year, including the building permits? Actually, we had a management team meeting. Last year at this time, we brought in about $97,000. This year, we're about $99,000. So we're basically going to meet your budget on everything.
So, Mr. Chairman, that shows them that a little bit of construction is finally going on.
Yes, and yes, we have the management team, and it was discussed that we pretty much have confidence from our plotting director, where he feels like we are going to basically meet what we did project in building permits, just because he's been issuing some special use permits and stuff for growth around the county. The next page of it, this is where actually high banks are transfers in and transfers out. And I wanted to let the commissioners know that right now, we haven't transferred any money into the general fund right now, we're still pending some grant reimbursements. So the biggest grant reimbursement that we are waiting for is the CPBG project. We recently hired a new employee, her name is Lori Montoya, she's our grants administrator for Tallas County. Her priority right now is to close out the CPBG application so we can then get reimbursement. And then after that, she'll get administrative grants for Tallas County.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question about revenue. The PILT came in last year, but we haven't received it for this year, or can you explain, are we going to be getting more PILT?
So last year, the PILT, Ms. O'Donnell, it was in budgeted in the general fund. This year, it's not budgeted in the general fund, it's budgeted in the capital fund. And so we don't receive that until June at the year end. So those monies don't come in until, probably the second or third week before the fiscal year ends.
Commissioner O'Donnell, you'll see that when we get to the 399, you'll see the revenue for PILT in that fund. And that's why you saw the decrease in beginning cash from one year to the next, that seemed pretty significant, and that's why you took the PILT out at that time. And now we're going to have that new standard of probably about $5 million or so.
Thank you, Mr. Fendro. And could, could you explain what the small counties assistance is? Where, where does that come from?
So those monies come in from the state, and so last year, we had received $187,000. This year, it looks like we received $190,000. That's a calculation that they have on their end, and depending on the needs of Tallas County and the needs surrounding all the other communities, we get a portion of that, and this year's portion was about $190,000 that did come in.
And where do we use that money?
That money goes into the general fund, so it's basically for general fund expenses. I don't know, I'll let you.
Thank you.
I have a question on the, on the first one. Are you planning on separating out that money, that extracting the budget, because you put it as a, as a whole?
What it, what it is, is we, when we designed the preliminary budget, we had separated that as its own increment, as its own identification, so we had like $785,000. Then during final budget preparation, our Treasurers Office decided to separate it out so they can keep track of what actually came in, so it was basically your department that needed the question, separate this and keep track of it, et cetera.
So we're going to have to.
Actually, right. So what's going to happen, what Ms. Trujillo is referring to is, so right now, we have it in its own revenue line item, so once the fiscal year's near the end, we'll probably adjust it to put it in the current line item. They just did this so we can actually see how much was generated from that one increment. Right?
Okay.
So the Tallas County Commissioner budget is the first one we'll look at, and we'll go through this very much in detail, we'll just basically put the total numbers on the bottom. So last year, September 30th, we had $153,000 in expenditures. This year, we have the $89,000, primarily taking out the central communications where we now house the E911 in Tallas County. So that's basically the biggest decrease there. The probate judge, really no activity, the only thing that's happened there is her health insurance decreased because previous probate judge had medical transfer family, and she has it on herself. County Treasurers budget, we have some vacancy savings from Ms. Trujillo not advertising or filling the cheap debt position. So that's what your vacancy savings are there, and that's what the district should use. The SAS office is pretty much near dollar for dollar. Last year, at 2/30th, they were at $214,000. This year, they're at $214,000. GIS department, they were last year at $93,000. This year, they're at $76,000. They have one vacant position they haven't filled yet, a GIS technician. Our county sheriffs department, last year at this time, they were at $479,000. This year, they're slightly under, they're at $449,000. They have a couple vacancies. There was some vacancy savings that he's had, but he's not fully staffed, so he's, he'll probably, by the time we get to mid-year review, he'll probably be right on target with his expenses to be passed through. Our county clerk is pretty much near on year from last fiscal year. Last year at this time, she was at $96,000. Currently, she's at $96,000, so she's pretty much nearing her, year of elections. Last year, they had $22,000, this year they're at $24,000. That's probably attributed to the health insurance and the 2% increase that we experienced, and then the cost of living increase. Tallas County Managers budget, gets a little bit higher this year, but not by much, and it's only like by $1,100. So last year at this time, they were at $98,000, right now they're at $100,000. Our Tallas County Human Resources Department did experience a slightly increased. Last year at this time, they were at $55,000, currently they're at $70,000. They have two new staff members onboard, and we basically put all the employee training in their budget, so they basically have some activity on there that they probably didn't prior year. So that's basically leading to the centralized purchasing. The Tallas County Attorney's budget has slightly significant activity, only because last year we didn't put in any money for litigation and judgments. So last year at this time, they had $69,000, right now they have $92,000. Now, that $15,000 was a payment need that normally would have probably gotten paid out of the 399 fund. Our Facilities Management Department, looks like it took a big hit. Well, it did, because when we designed his budget, we took out some utilities and stuff, so it looks like he has no activities towards the bottom half. So last year at this time, he spent about $259,000. Currently, he's at $123,000, the biggest expense being salary and benefits. Our Finance Department, looks like it increased, only because we did take out the utilities, and the utilities are quite high. So last year at this time, we were at $152,000, currently we're at $288,000. And we have, oh, and then this year, this, last year, we had to pay our auditors for the first portion of the audit work that's been done. This year, we are doing payments, so that's why there's a $43,000 audit expense there too. And speaking of audit, we're still waiting for, right? And speaking of audit, we're still waiting for wrap up. Our office this year has been busy with audit, trying to provide a lot of test work. This year, Taos County met the threshold of a single audit. We had managed over $500,000 of federal monies, which constituted a single audit, which requires more test work, which requires more sampling and stuff like that. So it's been back and forth. They're located in Albuquerque. We're here in Taos, so a lot of the stuff we've been having to send in is scan documents and verification and a lot of stuff over the phone. So it's not done yet, but it should be done by the end of the month.
It has to be done by the end of the month.
I know.
November 1st is our deadline. And I'm really pushing, you better push the auditors to get an extra conference schedule for us so we can get this audit out of the door and to stay out of your hands.
So our project manager, looks like it increased. What we did on that is we basically took one of the department staff from recreation and we put it into project managers' budget. So last year, we had some $22,000 of expenses. This year, we're at 56,000. One of these people had that one added position. And he does some, have some operational expenses versus last year where he had zero. Our purchasing department also looks like it increased and only because it, last year at this time, it was 13,000. Currently, it's at $42,000. Purchasing departments is in charge of centralized purchasing for the supplies. And they have a full-time staff member that was not there last year. So that's the reason why their activity seems kind of high. Um, Ms. Trill has done a great job in doing centralized purchasing. The first quarter has kind of been a little trial for her and her direct staff just to try to figure out a process and how to order the supplies, how to track them as they come in. And then trying to negotiate Xerox contracts and stuff. So she does have some activity this year from last year. Our next department is the fleet department, and this is a newly created department. Taos County hadn't had one before. So this year, we do have some activity. Um, on the agenda today, we do have a budget adjustment and just letting you know in advance, when we prepared this budget, we had basically the intent of just staffing it. We gave him a small operating budget. However, now that he's been instrumental in finding out his needs for the department, he has some budget adjustments and probably needs a few more than just the one being presented today. Our MIA's department. From last year to this year, they had a significant increase. It's basically due to we have failed a position that we hadn't failed from prior year. So basically, the increase is basically due out of the full-time employee from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. But it didn't get filled until the current fiscal year. So it's kind of like it was a pending position. It wasn't filled until probably like the second quarter of 2015 fiscal year. So that's his activity there. Community development, there's really no activity out of this fund at all. Um, basically, we just have to keep it because the actuals tied to the data that was on this one from years past. Taos County planning department has seen some activity. They're basically, last year at this time, they were at $133,000. This year, they're at $141,000. Basically attributed to salary and benefits and some small operational expenses. Our Taos County fire chief. From last year to this fiscal year, he's about half savings. So what we're doing under that is we're charging half of the budget to a different fund. So right now, from last year's budget to the $22,000 to the current $89,000, it's basically the salary benefits being paid out of a different fund, which is basically the final one, EMS. Our Taos County animal control, really hasn't seen any, any big significant changes. Last year at this time, they're at $62,000. Currently, they're at $65,000. Possibly due to the 3% health insurance increase and the 45% salary increase. Last department, because the general fund is a very big department, is the emergency management. And the activity is minimal on that. What we're doing is we're paying 40% salary out of this benefit, out of this department for our E911 directive. And so those 60% gets charged to E911. So there's basically minimal transactions on this one. Our public works department is next. And I did the same thing I did for the general fund, is I divided you three years of actuals and currently where we're at as of September 30th. So just real quick note on this one. We, in 2016, we increased the beginning cash balance at the year end. So we didn't have to allot for transfers for the first quarter. So the reason why they had big cash balance was basically because we had transferred cash at year end to sustain it for the first quarter. So every other year, we've had to transfer about $200,000 to the public works fund. This fiscal year, we have transferred $0. And they do have the reserve requirement at the 112th, and they did meet that by like $9,000. So they're coming in on budget as well. The next slide is basically going over the revenue of the public works department. And that's where you'll see that right now, they're about, they have a 2% increase from last year. And even though we projected 0% growth, what we did on that is we basically took the actuals from last year and that's how we budgeted current year GRTs. So they are experiencing a 2% increase from last fiscal year to current. We do have the activity also provided. Um, with the public works department, it looks like they're slightly under. But Taos County did reorganize and create a fleet department. We took two of their staff members and they became general fund employees. So basically, the decrease from their budget from last fiscal year to this fiscal year on the staff side is basically taking out two mechanics and also eliminating one administrative assistant. They've had some activity and uh, not really that much to note, but there is just the beginning cash balances. This is all I really wanted to mention on this, is we did give them sufficient cash balance to avoid having to transfer cash for the first quarter. Only because we knew that the general fund budget basically is the one who transfers to the other major funds.
Ms. Martinez, if I just might point out, their transportation expenses also down from previous year, which is their fuel. So they're still doing a very good job of being efficient with their fuel and getting ready. They're saving it up, I think, for the winter when they're probably needed.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin.
Mr. Chairman, could you just explain the Federal Forest Reserve?
Sure.
Can you move up to that page? Just on public works.
The Federal Forest Reserve, those monies don't come in until probably the latter half of the fiscal year. Um, last year, we did receive, oh, I, we received the $264,000. Prior year, which was in the 2014 fiscal year, we received $271,000. Those are those monies that come in from the Title III Forest Service Reserve. A certain portion of it does go into the road fund. And the other portion of it gets split into the Title III fund, which basically provides services for the outline, safety and in the area of urban management and Carson National Forest areas.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, this is one of those pools of money that we're always kind of worried about. Last year, it didn't come in as expected in February when we never could get it. And we had to wait until June to get the full allotment as expected. Took a lot of fighting up in Washington DC. And I would always encourage all of you to push for this money, just like we push for PILT. The Title III and the PILT are always on the chopping block, it seems like. And anything we can do to keep it flowing is a benefit to all of us.
Our next fund is a newly created department. It's E911. Taos County did some operations of this program until December 21st of 2014. So we don't really have the actuals to compare to, just activity from last fiscal year. Last fiscal year at this time, they have $28,000 cash balance. And it's only because Taos County had transferred them $85,000, which is our commitment to the 28333 per month that we normally provided at the time to the town of Taos. So this fiscal year, we had a beginning cash balance of the $247,000. The revenue is from the town of Taos. It's the 26333 times three months. They've had some expenditures of $153. Transfers are from Taos County, $85,000. And they have an ending cash balance of the $264,000. Um, Mr. Martinez has taken initiative on this department to try to streamline the staffing pattern. And he's done really a good job. I had a board meeting with him the other day. And I was really impressed with how the process has been handled by Taos County. And the towns were impressed with it too. And so were the representatives that also mentioned that Taos County is doing a great job doing this E911 program for Taos County.
Are you alluding to the, prior to Mr. Martinez, we had an unbelievable overtime?
Right, and actually at the board meeting, we did have discussion regarding that. We talked about right now that they have a current budget of $45,000 in overtime budget. Right now, they spent about $14,000. So I told them that in the next three months, basically, there's like seven paid holidays by Taos County because these employees work those, they're going to get paid out of power. So we did mention our concerns regarding the overtime, probably not exceeding actually. We talked about some strategic ideas. I did mention to the board, I mean, to the, yeah, to the board meeting, that Taos County is in the process of doing a compensation study plan. And so at that time, we will determine what pay needs to be adjusted according to pay these employees according to that way communities that we surround in our near-in sights.
In previous, correct me if I'm wrong, but you were spending about $45,000 a quarter in overtime?
Some of the reports I hadn't actually seen. Some of the last ones I did was kind of mind-boggling just to see that the expenditures were that high in overtime. And like I said, Mr. Martinez has done a great job trying to staff it. Because we do, trust me, every paper we provide him is overtime for the activity that he's had. And he's monitoring it. And so he's faithfully looking at it, but at the same time, his staff does work 12 hours. So it's kind of hard to not pay it when they do work those 12-hour shifts. So we are seeing
That's still huge, the management of that one. Because that one issue was, was a better than a $20,000 liability to the county.
And so that's where we are.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, between the preliminary and final budget, we could add another position for another dispatcher out there, which is helpful with overtime. And we do listen to Mr. Martinez. He's indicating he may need one more dispatcher, property staff, to not have overtime worked into his, his scheduling. And if that's the case, quality of life for the dispatchers is very important and having that time off. And, but it does mean that we do have to look at the compensation. Uh, we do train them and they get their way, just like every other department. And so we do need to figure out how to add the dispatcher as well as bringing their salaries up to a comfortable so we don't lose them. And we have some good dispatchers out there. Mr. Martinez is very proud of his staff and we certainly want to keep them here at Taos County and not train them up to go to somewhere else and we have to be home.
If they need watching.
And so like I said, it's kind of hard to have actuals for this department only because it's newly created. So we don't really have any actuals, a little expensive pay castor to the program. So right now, we have a healthy cash balance and we basically want to make sure he keeps a little reserve requirement and they're probably going to hire a cash balance. Our next fund is our detention fund. And again, the same concept we did is basically providing three years of actuals. And currently where we're at in September, we did have a bigger cash balance that we started for fiscal year with. We had a little bit of increase in revenue. Some expenditures have gone up only because we have a different healthcare contract in place. Right now, we have to transfer $150,000 considering that they had a high cash balance. This is one fund that has always, since its inception, has trained the general fund. So we basically budgeted $2 million in those transfers. And first quarter, we already had to transfer them $150,000. But if you know the cash balance is $140,000, so technically that transfer could have been a little bit lower. We transferred more only anticipating the three cables that we have now in October. So carry them a little bit longer. The next slide is the revenue side of it. Um, last year at this time, they had brought in a total of the $93,000 in revenue. This year, they brought in $135,000. Basically attributed, last year, there might have been some outstanding voices that were to Taos County for the adult care prisoners. Last year at this time, we had only brought in about $1,535. Currently, we're at $26,000. I need to make $6,000. Um, I don't know, Mr. Corbin, talk about the possible, right now, they're fully staffed in both detentions. We have one vacant position in the adult detention. We are in the process of possibly considering some kind of fee increase for the juvenile detention site only because we might have to have more staff onboard. And I'll let Mr. Corbin touch up on that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're realizing that we're very low-priced for our juvenile. Um, and as other counties, and really Santa Fe County is considering the future of their program, whether they're going to continue to house juvenile, it would make our facility at a higher premium essentially. And I think it's only prudent for us to, I, at least explore the idea of raising our rates to a comparable amount so we don't necessarily lose as much money. I don't know if we're losing money in there, but we could probably earn more revenue. And if other facilities are closing, we're going to see a major increase. And part of the way to fend off that increase is to raise the rate. So it's, it's a twofold. We want to help control our population by adding a little bit higher rate and making them consider what they didn't have to pay to bring all the Taos. So we can make more money and control our population at the same time. I spoke with Ms. Gonzalez and she's doing some research. She's kind of come back to us with her ideas and determine what that rate may be. And we'll come back and show that. Are we full there now? No, um, we, we have five, maybe six.
Five days yesterday, listening to today's report.
So we're averaging four to five, uh, I think. I think we've gotten as high as seven. Uh, we have a capacity for maybe 17. So we do have a little bit of capacity there. But it is a balancing act. Certainly don't want to push the population where we are then having a higher additional staff to meet that. So right now, they're, they're sweet spot with the in-between where we're at and the max.
One thing to note on the revenue side of it too, is the GRTs have come in a little bit healthier than we did last year. Last year at this time, on the correctional tax, I mean, on the correctional GRT increment, we had received $34,000. As of September 30th of this year, we received $57,000. So we are renewing a little bit more revenue on the GRT side of the detention side.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Can we talk about at some point the JDC pair coordinator? Um, apparently, I don't know who applies for that grant. I know that, I think that comes out of, is it crime victims? But could we find out if a grant writer is going to apply again or what, how we could get back on track with that?
Ms. Gonzalez applied for it last year, so I will reach out to her and see if she's going to pursue it again.
And then, thank you. And then, um, where does it show the reimbursement from the Department of Corrections that we aren't being fully reimbursed for?
That would be the, towards the middle of the revenue, it's called the federal care prisoners. Prior year in 2014, we had received the $57,000. When we closed our boats last year, Taos County only received the $27,000. And that's where we'd chart in the state regarding that payment coming in. Um, because we weren't sure if we didn't see an increase or decrease on that for this current year, the 2016 budget. We basically just budgeted the dollar amount that we received last year.
So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, is there some way we could write a letter to the Department of Corrections and actually bill them? I think what is, it's really, we should be getting about $120,000 a year. But is there any way we could have some political leverage, at least to make a point that we need this money?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's a very heavy topic in the manager's affiliate through NMC as well as through the detention affiliate. So that's certainly being addressed through those two affiliates. Um, when I do attend our manager's retreat in November, I will come back with some ideas as to what other counties are doing. But certainly, putting the pressure on is, I'm in favor of that. However, that shakes out in terms of affiliate, I would like to be consistent with the rest of the state and the other managers on how we do that. But I do know it's on the radar of the managers. It's a very heavy initiative this year for the managers. I believe the Commissioners as well. I believe it's for the Commissioners for you.
Thank you.
And so during the mid-winter conference, they have these affiliates. Sometimes there are joint meetings. You guys are welcome even though you're just part of the commission affiliate. You can walk in and any of the other affiliates just to get some information too. So it is going through NMC.
Yeah, that was a big part of Steve Colton's presentation. He emphasized that that's something they can work on, so hopefully.
And what's the JDC teacher salary? How come we don't see that anymore?
That was also a reimbursement request that we had got, received from the, from Ms. Gonzalez. And also saw another grant from the Taos Municipal Schools. And that flourished this fiscal year.
Is that, again, if we could look at how we could get more grants into the jail, that would be great. Thank you.
Oh, Susan, you want to step up so they, they can hear your question?
Actually, it's not a question, it's a comment. At, uh, one of the legislative meetings that we had, I believe it was in Espinola, they brought up this issue of the detention center. And it was fortunate that Taos County has had, kept very good records as to what they have, their billing practices. But other counties have not. And within the analysis that, that is done and what is reported to the fed, to the feds, that is what seems to be holding or bottlenecking this whole issue. So I believe that by management, um, or the managers, the managers affiliate and even at the detention center, if they would stress how important it is to bill correctly, uh, that would make a huge difference on what is billed to the, at the federal level. And, uh, but we're fortunate that, I think that we even got what we got. Even though, um, it seems, I don't know how they, like I said, the analysis that they do and the disbursement of these monies was what I understood at this meeting was that's what we're being, um, basically penalized because of what other counties are not doing. But I think we need to continue and that way we have good records. And we can say, like you said, Commissioner O'Donnell, to bill. And we can say, like you said, Commissioner O'Donnell, to bill again, to bill and rebuild and say, well, this, we're not getting our monies. We're billing correctly and make that statement at the state level.
And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hill, so you're saying this Department of Corrections money that we're not getting flows down from the federal government, is that what?
Well, yes, because they're prisoners. They're, some of them are federal prisoners or state prisoners. And so these monies are, we bill. But they, like I said, they do an analysis according to the monies that they do get. And so when they disperse the monies, they're not dispersed accordingly to what we're billing. There seems to be a different type of analysis that they do, was what I understood. And again, I think it's going to be at the forefront because it's a hot topic and because it's a huge expense for the detention centers that we're having to house prisoners that we're not getting reimbursed for.
Thank you.
The next slide is basically the expense side for adult detention. Pretty much the only increase on there has been on full-time positions. So basically, last year at this time, they had already spent $452,000. This year, they're at $494,000 because they have full-time staff and benefits. The next slide is the JDC slide, which is the juvenile department. Basically, an increase again in full-time positions and salary benefits. Our next department is one of our enterprise funds. It's a solid waste fund. This fund started off account with a small cash balance than it has in prior fiscal years. I'm a little concerned about that. I've expressed my concerns with management, but we're just watching this every month just to see the activity coming through. We did increase the rates this year, so we did see a significant increase in the revenue side of it. We have had some expenses also match that. So right now, ending cash balance, they have $186,000 versus $141,000 we were last year. So they're a little bit healthier this year than last year. But I'm still a little concerned about their cash balance and their next billing stuff wasn't until January. So I'm monitoring that and Mr. Martinez and Ms. Martinez in the solid waste department, they meet with me every month to go over their expenses and their operating budget.
Which part of the operations is increasing their expenses?
It would be basically the town that Taus started to be that we pay. So we can't, we have to pay that every single month. And so we'll go ahead and go into that part of it. The first part is the revenue side. And I just wanted to go over the GRT again on this one. Last year at this time, Taus County, we see $43,000. Currently, we have received $64,000. So we do see an increase in the GRTs for the environmental tax. Our landfill users fees toward the middle of the revenue side. Last year, we're at $251,000. Currently, we're at $315,000. That's due to the increase of the... And then we had some bin rentals that decreased a little bit. But overall, it's pretty healthy budget, just considering it's enterprise. We just basically like to keep an eye on these departments a little bit closely. So just giving you guys a courtesy on that, that we do monitor this activity every month.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask? Why doesn't finance take over this control, this budget? I'm concerned about accounts receivable. So I know it's something that had been discussed about if this has to be a commission vote, but at some point, I'd like to consider this, you know, way the pros and cons of that.
We've talked about the organizational structure of that department and it's still in the works right now, Ms. O'Donnell, but we are trying to address that only because we feel that there might be a different approach. We might take on that.
Thank you.
And we will keep you updated as progress is made.
One thing I'd like to point out here on expenses, maintenance of vehicles. Last year at this time, we have spent over almost $22,500 in maintenance. This year, $1,700. The two new roll-offs have saved us a tremendous amount of money. And it just goes to show the importance of providing new vehicles, new equipment for our staff to be able to do their job every day and spend less time in the shop, more time on the road. So I just wanted to point that out as well. I think that's a significant savings.
The other savings to add to that is also again, the transportation expense. If one department starts to experience that savings, all departments seem to follow that same pattern. And then the next budget is basically the administration side and that's basically the side that Ms. O'Donnell was referring to as far as the operations of how they collect the monies and the receipts of it and stuff. The next department is our other enterprise fund, it's the Taus Ambulance, also known as the EMS fund. So we do have some activity there. We have a bigger cash balance. I do want to go over the revenue with you. We have some expenses on there and we have an ending cash balance of $115,000. We're slightly lower than last year, but we're still healthier than prior years. So we look at the revenue side of it. And last year at this time, Taus County had received $273,000 of intake fees. Currently, we're at $231,000. It's about 10%, 10% drop from last fiscal year. The $140,000 that we received last year is basically for the ambulance. We aren't expecting to receive that this year, so there's no budget for that. So last year's revenue to this year's revenue is down only because $140,000 of it was from a vehicle that Holy Cross Hospital, by Taus County, from the revenue that we get the vehicle expense after. Our EMS billing staff continues to be in monies according to the new rules that they have for the medical billing side. So they're learning some codes and stuff. And so every time they have a new code or a new way of medical billing, they have to take those courses. And so they've basically been doing that and they're down one position right now because one of the ladies is on maternity and I'm excited for her and she should be back to work sometime next month.
I know that, but they just started a new coding. So they went from nine-digit to 10-digit coding, starting now in October. And I think we're working through some of those changes in this first month of billing. But they were trained, as Ms. Martinez mentioned, so we are hopeful that it won't be too much of a transition of letting it continue to bill accordingly.
We were previously losing a lot of money within proper coding, is my understanding. We've come a long ways on that.
I would say years ago, yes. I think in the last couple of years, we've come along and we've gotten much better. We pretty much collect what we build and that's a great, great thing.
And actually, just to let you know, during mid-year review, we're probably going to come before the commissioners to increase the revenue and expenditures, only to account for a little bit more casual positions or temporary positions in that department. If you look at the top part of it on the Taus Ambulance side, I italicized and bolded a little section of it with the temporary positions. Right now, they have a negative of $845,000. I'm not going to prepare a budget adjustment to address that just yet just because I want to see what they come in around mid-year review. So if we do increase anything, it's going to be increasing the revenues for the intake fees to account for our budget, to account for casual positions that we limited in last year's budget. So we have a small pinasco fees that we have budgeted for. And this is basically just salary and benefits. Because they exhausted the $25,000 of temporary salaries in the Taus ambulance, most of the expenses now hit to the pinasco. And this is basically what we're doing in finances. We're keeping track of how many hours you worked in Taus and how many hours you worked in pinasco. So when we come before the commissioners to increase the budget, we can account for how much needs to go into the pinasco and how much will go into the past budget. So some other funds that we'll go over and then it will conclude my presentation. The first one is the most important fund because this is where we have the Pilt, Ms. O'Donnell. So this is basically where you see the monies coming in. This is the capital enhancement fund is what it was named. Right now, of course, there's been no activity because the revenue isn't coming in until the end of the fiscal year. So we had a beginning cash balance of the $1.052 million. We've had some activity of the $97,603 versus last year where we had only spent the $35,000 on your power coin. I gave you guys a courtesy copy of the general ledger expenditures just because I wanted you guys to capture the detail of what was actually paid for some of the expenses. So if we look at the page two, which I have very poor vision and I can't really read that from kind of a print copy. But basically what it is, is this is tallying up your total. So right now, the activity there is about $97,603 and that ties to the expenditures. It's just basically so you guys can see like what vendors have been paid and what payments have been made to each of the vendors. Do you want to talk about this one, Mr. Cordova?
I just want to mention that under, depending under the road projects, we haven't paid for some of the ones you just finished. And so that's why it seems a little low, even though we have completed most of our road projects, that there'll be some big expenses under there by this month. But we're prepared for it.
So right now, because the Pilt money was put in there last year at this time, they only had $131,000. This year, they have $951,000 ending cash balance over this month. But like, yeah, Mr. Cordova just mentioned, some of the expenses haven't been paid and the road projects haven't completed. So by mid-year, we'll probably have a little bit narrower the number down and more activity that will post to this fund. In the $399, we also have a treasuries administrative fee that we budgeted in the $399, so I took courtesy to put this one in there. We already came before the commissioners to adjust the budget to account for the extra payment that was received. There's been no activity in Ms. Treehill's expense. So right now, she still has a cash balance of the $19,973.51. The Taus County Healthcare Fund, this is where the first two payments went into the healthcare fund before Taus County put them into the general fund. So these were the GRTs from prior, so from July and August portions got put into this fund. So if you were to add up technically these amounts and you put them into the general fund, we'd pretty much be mirror on mirror with 25% we should be. But they're in this fund and so go ahead and answer.
This fund will run the drill. So this is, this is the end of the revenue now that we reimbursed it.
The Taus County Judicial Complex, this is our other one that saw an increase in GRTs. So from last fiscal year, we had received $78,000. This fiscal year, Taus County had received $166,000, significantly higher. We've had some activity last year that were totaling $664,000. This year, we have $112,000. We do have some big expenses that will probably get paid in the next quarter and the numbers will then be a little bit more comparable and marry each other from prior year.
Our IT budget will get paid out of this one. So that is actually already been paid out, it was paid out in October, so it's not going to reflect in this quarter. But we did expend just under $100,000 of the computer budget.
Mr. Chairman, what's the total budget a year for this fund? Ending cash balance of $1.2 million?
That's where we're at right now. That's our cash balance right now. So we started off the year with $902,000. Right now, because we received the increase of the GRTs, we have increased it by $438,000. And because Taus County has had some activity in the expenditure side, we have the cash balance of $1.2 million. But like I said, some activity has been paid now in October. So of course, that's not the cash balance right now.
So there would be sufficient funding if the commission were to agree to put glass in the courthouse?
That's a discussion that we need to have more offline with staff in general. I don't know what that full cost would be. But yes, this is money, this is the excess of our debt service. So when GRTs are good, we need our minimum debt service that's required. All the excess GRT from those benches go in here. We have used this fund to equip our 911 centers. You see the million from actual 2015. We do have more expenses associated with the 911 this year. And then we pay our payments to the Pericich property across the street out of this fund. So I do like to maintain a balance in here that will be able to pay off that property, in which case scenario. So I do like to maintain at least the debt service payments that are required for that property.
Yeah, Chairman.
Mr. Haddam.
Mr. Cordova, you might, this commission wasn't sitting when there has been on occasion that it hasn't been sufficient. GRT hasn't come in high enough to meet the debt service.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Haddam's point is right on. That's another reason we had such a high balance. When I got here two and a half years ago, we actually were not generating enough GRT to meet the debt service as required. And so we were having to cut a check from this fund to meet our debt service. Since then, we've done very well. We've been able to meet our debt service. But, you know, conservative and being cautious, it is prudent to have money in there in case that problem arises again in the future, so we can meet that debt service. And here's Chairman.
What's the payoff on the Pericich property?
Oh, you ask me every time. I believe it's just upwards of $600,000, but I can certainly verify that.
And what interest rate are we paying?
Five.
It's over five.
It's above, it's over five.
So we're getting less than one and we're paying five. Any accelerated payments in mind for that to pay it down? Every dollar you pay down, you save over $4,000.
You can get it out?
Yeah, how about in mid-year, we'll come up with a couple of suggestions for you. If you want to once back and head down that road, it would certainly pay it off just a little sooner and have that available for other people.
Mr. Chairman, is that something we could refinance at a lower interest rate or not?
Unfortunately, it's a personal note with Mr. Pericich. If we were to go down the route of refinancing it, it would make, it may create other issues with the current debt service on the building and we have a heavy debt load in general. So we'd probably be better off paying it off instead of refinancing it.
Our next two funds are associated with the lodgers tax. This one is the lodgers tax promotional. We're pretty much marrying last year's budget. We haven't really seen a big significant increase in our lodgers tax. Last year at this time, we had brought in $39,000. This year, we brought in $40,000. We've had some activity from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. So we end the curve with $63,000 versus the $80,000 last year. Next is our non-promotional fund associated with the lodgers tax. Again, same thing, we have lodgers tax last year that came in at $58,000. This year, we're at $61,000. So there's been some significant increase, but not significantly enough to do any special projects or anything with. Last year at this time, we had a cash balance of $78,000. We have a current cash balance of $117,000. Taus County has a vacant position we haven't filled in this fund and therefore that's why we have a little salary benefits expenditures for this quarter. Our lodgers tax recreation, we never really had revenue on there. Last year, we collected money from the baseball fields events, $1,500. This year, Taus County has received the $1,700. We have a position that we just recently filled in the recreation fund. So you'll see some activity next quarter for salary benefits for that one individual. So right now, we have a small minimal balance of $9,453. This fund is basically funded from the lodgers tax. So the reason why we have to transfer in comes from the transfers out of the lodgers tax. And so right now, as of today, from last year to this year, we've already transferred this program $10,000. The last fund that we're going to cover today is the indigent fund. It's basically mirror on mirror from last year's budget. Last year at this time, Taus County had brought in revenue of $412,000. Currently, we're at $437,000. A slight increase on the GRTs, just as all the other funds are experiencing. And then we have some small activity from last fiscal year. We had spent eight, we had spent $356,000. Currently, Taus County expenditures for the indigent fund totaled $278,000, leading to cash balance of $1.4 versus last year where we had $853. So this fund, Mr. Cordova, you might want to talk about a little bit more just because I think it was the meeting yesterday about the contracts that you guys might go in off the RFP.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you're mentioning, yes, we're pretty much are finalizing our RFPs for our agency requests and for our medical requests. So we hope that those after the November. We have budgeted some money out of this for those programs and initiatives. And we're anxiously looking forward to see what kind of responses we get and how we can distribute some of that money. Just so you know, another, we've been getting more emails, we've been getting more questions heading into this legislative session in regards to revenues and fund balances within these funds. The state is looking at, once again, I think, trying to raid our indigent money or perhaps going after the Medicaid match, which is a state intercept they already take right off the top. I believe it'll be controversial like it has in the past and NMC will probably be an important partner in this fight. And we will continue to fight the idea of the state just taking our tax money for their purposes. It just seems to be a pattern. The more they have a hard time to convenient their budget issues, the more they put on the backs of the local governments. And once again, we're seeing that push, that initiative through this indigent fund. When they ask us our balances, I'm almost afraid to tell them. Because we do have very healthy balances between the healthcare and the indigent fund. But we have a purpose and we have uses for them. And they should not be eyeing it as a stopgap for their budget shortfalls. We will be pushing that money out the door. We want to do it responsibly. We're going to do it in small chunks this year to get some money out the door to different, as many agencies as possible. And in the future, we'll be quicker about doing it. But we certainly want the state to know we have a plan and we will be spending this money.
So those RFPs, including the ones for the community center, will you pass those to the board or can we just publish them?
We'll just publish them in the community center. We hope to publish a week prior to the other ones. So we might be doing the community center next week. And then the RFP for the agency and the medical go out this first or second week in a row. So staff, they're leaving. So staff, they're even, we're going to have to find the details on this, it's the first time they've done this at the county. So we are kind of making sure we do it well, and then we'll learn from any issues we have. We'll let commission know when everything's out there, so that you can encourage, um, people to submit their proposals.
I wonder, shouldn't we review it?
We all have the opportunity to review the, anything that we've awarded. So based on the proposals, the proposals will come in, the staff will let out the proposals, and we'll come and get some input from the commission onto what kind of award we'll be giving out. But I think at this time, to solicit the proposals, um, I think we have, we need, it's going to be pretty broad, it's going to be pretty general, and it's going to be open to a lot of different opportunings. And we did that on purpose, we did our best to keep it where, um, just about, if, if there's going to be a long, laundry list of functions that we're going to open it up for, and we hope that, um, educational programs, recreational programs, and of course, all the different types of health, mental health, advisory type council, those things are already encompassed in there.
And the estimated times for publication of those?
This year, we decided to do a thirty day because they were so late in the game, we're going to publish it, we're going to give thirty days for the proposals, but we also will be doing our best outreach to everybody that's already waiting. There, there's a lot of groups that are very patiently waiting, in the future, we'll do a forty-five day, and we'll do it earlier in the budget.
And when will the publication occur?
Second week of November.
Okay.
That's what our goal is at this time.
Great job.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank Ms. Martinez for taking on the position of Interfinance Director. You, you have done an awesome job, I, I really enjoyed the presentation.
Thank you, and I hope it was met your needs. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have big shoes to fill.
I'm afraid you're going to do a better job.
Good fear to have.
Yes, yes.
All right, uh, I guess we're on to B now, and, and that is a decision regarding approval of a budget adjustment for the fire protection funds.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I come before you on behalf of the Taus County Fire Chief. Mr. Joaquim Gonzalez has asked for eighty, eighty-four hundred dollars to purchase a new vehicle for fire administrative purposes. He has attached an email to the budget adjustment request, so you can actually see what his request is for. Um, he'll be taking out the eighty-four hundred dollars from the equipment, and he'll put it into the vehicle purchase, allowing Mr. Gonzalez to proceed with the purchase of the vehicle. This vehicle we bought from New Mexico Surplus, um, and I recommend it for one.
Mr. Cordeau, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, let's see, who got the motion? I guess Commissioner Romero gets the motion, uh, Commissioner Fambro gets a second, call for vote.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gago.
Yes.
Commissioner Ometo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blakenham.
Yes. I can see is a decision regarding approval of a budget adjustment for the Title III Forest Service.
Mr. Commissioner, Chairman, um, on this one, Mr. Sanchez and I from Nathan, from Planning Department, we've been on this one, and we basically met the criteria. Mr. Sanchez has to publish the expenditure through the Title III budget. He has to allocate the budget accordingly, so when he does prepare his expenditure report that's published in the Taus News, that it meets the criteria. So what we did is we basically took the ten thousand dollars out for maintenance and vehicle, and we put the ten thousand dollars into safety equipment. And we've taken out the five thousand dollars that we had budgeted for street lighting, and we put that into other contractual services. So basically, this is the only time we're going to adjust this budget, and only so that Mr. Sanchez publishes it in the Taus News. The expenditure will be a true reflection of the activity that will pose to the title payments, and I recommend it for one.
Move, move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fambro seconds, call for vote.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gago.
Yes.
Commissioner Ometo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blakenham.
Yes, Ivan B is a decision regarding approval of a budget adjustment for the Fleet Department.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, as I mentioned during the budget review, um, Fleet Department was a newly created department. We didn't have enough resources and time to tell us how to prepare an operating budget. At this time, Mr. Aragon has identified a need to purchase some safety equipment. We have taken out transportation expense in the amount of two thousand dollars. I will be coming before you, tie the next commission meeting or the, um, the second one in November, to possibly do another bar. He's identified another need since this meeting that we've had, and at this time, I recommend approval of the two thousand dollars into safety equipment.
So, I'll second, call for vote.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gago.
Yes.
Commissioner Ometo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blakenham.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, before our seven-minute break.
Seven-minute break, six today.
Six, oh, six today, okay.
This is a body break. I'll second. Well, uh, Commissioner O'Donnell made a motion, uh, for seven, is there amended to a six? And I, when I have a second, did the amended motion. Just, just, uh, quick to get that out. Always paying attention.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gago.
Yes.
Commissioner Ometo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blakenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gago.
Yes.
Commissioner Ometo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Blakenham.
Yes.
Okay, where are we? On to eleven, County Manager's Report. A discussion regarding direction of staff on possible creation of a detention center advisory committee.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, um, I mean, I think we're probably a little further than the possible creation. I think what we want to talk about more specifically is what this, um, advisory committee is going to look like, and what kind of role they're going to actually serve for the county. Um, I think the last discussion we had as a commission, it was advised to get some kind of resolution in place and, and look at that and bring that forward for approval. Um, the very, the first attempt at a resolution given to the county was, um, unfortunately, was unacceptable in terms of what it did for, um, the liability issues, um, how it kind of went into management issues and into governance issues. Um, as the first resolution that I saw and read, I couldn't have supported that from management side of things. And I was, at that time, questioning what we're trying to accomplish with this committee. Um, we do have a committee already in place within the detention center, within detention center staff, that is, um, what we feel we would like to complement with an advisory committee. But what we don't want to do is have an advisory committee come in and start trying to govern, or do operational suggestions that are the responsibility of staff and management, and governing responsibility of the commission. So we do want to have the discussion today to really talk about, as the commission, as public, all come together to try and decide how this committee can look in a way that the commission can support it. So before I do bring a resolution before you, I want to be able to support it from management's perspective, and I would like the committee or the commission to be able to approve it. I want it to be something that you're going to be happy with and, and want to move forward with. So that's the point of bringing it on the County Manager's Report in this, in this way. I'm going to invite, um, Ms. Gonzalez to come up real quick and talk about the committee that we do have in place. It's a committee that was formed through the initiatives of NMAC. Um, like I mentioned, it is an internal staff committee, and it does have, um, certain criteria that's required for us to get to NMAC's standard. And so, Ms. Gonzalez, if you would mind talking a little bit about that.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission.
Good morning.
We have in place currently what we call Special Management Housing Detained Committee. And this committee meets weekly, it meets Mondays at ten o'clock. And this committee entails, or it includes the management staff of the detention center, the medical staff, and the kitchen staff of the detention center. And what this committee does is we go into depth, and we talk about individual cases of detainees who are incarcerated with medical and mental health issues. The kitchen portion of it is when detainees are on special diets, in these special dietary, um, or has special dietary needs. We come together as management, medical, and kitchen team to ensure that their diets are proper for medical care and also mental health care. Um, once that is completed, our kitchen staff leave the room, and we continue with mental health and medical issues. And we go in, in depth with each detainee who has medical and mental health concerns, and on a weekly basis, we have a plan on how we are handling these issues, what we're going to be doing in the next week with these issues, and what the pros and cons of what our trials are for these detainees. And we also, um, have discharge plans. When a detainee is going to be released or getting ready for release, we have a discharge plan, and we connect them with community, um, counselors, additional appointments. We send them with medication when needed, so that when they leave our doors, they're not just left out on the street with nothing that, other than what they had in the detention center. So it's a really in-depth, uh, meeting that we have on a weekly basis. It is also encouraged, uh, through the New Mexico Association of Counties, through a policy that we're adopting. And, um, during the legislative session this year, through the Senate Joint Memorial Task Force Four, we are going back and through the legislation to see how all detention centers are handling the mental health and medical care inside the detention facilities. So our facility is not the only facility doing this, it's, um, all twenty-seven counties who have detention centers.
Commissioner Fambro, to leave us on the news today, actually, there's a bill that's going to be introduced that would allow you to release more information regarding, mental status of a person too long for some, prior to release. Do you know anything about that?
I'm not familiar with that.
I'll try to find it online and be forward to you, so maybe it could, that makes sense to me, but. It's to relax the HIPAA, um, information, so that you'd be able to disclose any pressing need that could affect our community of too long for some, which I really liked, what I, what I heard, but I'd like to hear more about it. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. I think from management and staff perspective, what, the reason we brought up this committee and how they're working is we would, I think we would like to see the Citizens Advisory Committee help complement that. Help us, as these things are identified and as the detainees are being transitioned, maybe provide us some help in the middle, um, to get them the right services. Also, I could envision this committee helping us with the grants that Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned earlier, maybe looking and pursuing private or additional grant money for specific programs within our detention center. I think that complement of this committee would be the easiest approach and the kind of approach that's management could stand behind in, in this committee and taking it forward. I know that the committee has different ideas, and I, I guess at this time, would probably welcome any of the committee members or Commissioner O'Donnell as a, a member of that as well, to give their opinion, give their voice, and, and tell you what they may have been trying to envision, but, um, I, I do want to have the discussion and keep arguing, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just give a little history, um, I was approached by Rita Sannasdevan, who's no longer involved, about what, you know, I thought about a jail advisory committee a year and a half or so ago, and I've been to one of their three meetings, um, and at that point, I said, you know, I don't think I should serve on this committee. I mean, unless you want to change the way it's made up, but, so I just sat in, um, and, and that was pretty much the extent of it. Now, most of the people are from the recovery-friendly group, so we're talking about most of the people have experience in jails, or, um, they either work in alcohol or mental abuse treatments, um, so they have that kind of background that they could augment and help, um, maybe do programs in the jail, like, um, having, you know, dogs come in, therapy dogs. Or, these are ideas where we start thinking outside the box of how to, um, keep the mental health, mentally ill people a little more sane than once they get out, um, to help them. So this is new, I don't, you know, I don't have any particular ideas except for programs afterwards, if they could help augment, um, you know, checking in on these people to see what they're doing so they don't have, get back in jail, but this is why I think it's up for discussion to see where you want to go. Now, if you recall, Lance Medina, who's the chair, came and asked if we would appoint members. I appointed Albert Valdez from Ladito at that meeting, and he has been going to the meetings religiously. Also suggested a lady named Diana L. Martinez, who is also has a social work background. So I've suggested two people, I don't know how many are on the committee now, but I think that was probably important. Missing pieces was, uh, the, uh, other commissioners should weigh in on who they wanted to be on this committee.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Maron, might add something?
Just a very quick comment, um, procedure, um, one thing that I think would be important to address and give some guidance today is a point that Commissioner O'Donnell just mentioned, and that is how the committee will be constipated, we don't have a procedure, obviously, we haven't adopted a resolution yet. Uh, we have a model for the Water Advisory Committee where each commissioner appoints people. Uh, related to the Water Advisory Committee is whether there needs to be, and this is a policy decision that the commission will have to make, but whether there needs to be any standards for the kinds of qualifications that people should bring to the table. Um, and then, so the procedure for appointment, the draft document that was circulated some time ago had the committee appointing its own members, and that struck me as a problem from the standpoint of this commission not exercising control over a committee that it creates and presumably forms. The second thing is to just be sure that we focus on the precise role of the committee. Again, um, when, if, if we're going to adopt a resolution establishing this committee, we need to describe what their role would be. And I think that may have been what, um, Leandro was talking about, when he talked about the broad basis of the, of the resolution that was proposed.
Thanks, Bob, we definitely need to address those points. Commissioner Fambro.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Leandro, maybe we should check with NMAC to see how many of these advisory committees are out there in the, in the counties. Look at their structure, how it's made up to address Bob's two concerns that he brought up, and I'm sure those already have Graves-Phillips' blessing, and, and we see the functionality of that. So we're not reinventing the wheel, plus we're doing things to the way that needs to be done.
Okay.
So I don't know how many other advisory, I'd like to know how many other detention center advisory committees are out there, and what their role is, how they're made up, and, um...
Uh, Commissioner Gago. Mr. Chair, I do agree with you with Commissioner Fambro, uh, are there other county committees out there in the public? For me, I'm more kind of the current advisory committee that's there, if there's issues or questions or suggestions that they have pertaining to, to jail, and I think that advisory committee should be coming addressing the commission. Unless we're going to have law, you know, this advisory board's going to have law enforcement, or former law enforcement people that know the jails as well. I do understand having, uh, committee members that are part of rehabilitation or maybe other things like that, but that's a whole different thing, I believe. I, I think that, um, you know, if we're going to have these issues, if there are any issues there in the jail that need to be addressed, then, you know, we need to start within the house. We, as a commission here, we can make those decisions, and if we keep getting committees, on top of committees, to make these decisions and give suggestions, then we're not doing our job up here. So, you know, we need to have a closer connection, sorry, closer connection with the leadership, and the directors, and the people that are engaged already, and get those answers from them, and then move forward. You know, so I think we still need a little bit more work before we can start moving into getting a community advisory group to go in there and see those things. I mean, we just want to make sure we're doing it in-house first.
Thank you. Thank you. We do have a couple of people here in the audience who have been active in this and I think they have some comments they'd like to make.
I'm going to brace this guy because I got him going, even though it's bigger than him. I just want to share with you, Metta Theater has been going in since October with the sense of experimentation, positive backing of John Gonzalez and Andrew Montoya. And what we've been doing is going in, well now, three evenings a week for several hours and giving drama training, two evenings a week and a third creative writing where you hand out comic books and get these young men and women writing. So that's where I'm coming from is being on the inside of the juvenile detention center and need and spending time with these young people in our community. So when this committee was proposed, somebody, a couple of people asked if I'd like to be part of it and I said sure. And based on what's said today, I can see that Lawrence Medina, the chair, is really required to be here who was drafting a much broader vision than what's been addressed here, which I'm totally understanding in agreement with what's been said so far. So I have another commitment I have to make. But Greg Peace will speak further. But my own position, speaking for myself, is I'm in total agreement with Mr. Fambro and Mr. Gagoz and the legal points that were raised and Mr. Cordova's points as well. It's got to be a spirit of cooperation, not a couple of guys who think they know what's best crashing into the, you know, through a very complex and an organization that has, you know, a huge expenditure outlay requirement from the county, but also years of expertise from law enforcement corrections required. So just from this point of view, a citizen who's interested in doing participating in my little piece of the puzzle, what I can offer, I think being put has to be very well regulated to be effective and not create friction or... I'm just in total appreciation of Mr. Montoya and Ms. Gonzalez for allowing us to give this a try and supporting us in doing that and seeing personally just how rewarding it is for me to spend time with these young people. And the staff is absolutely exemplary in the kind of support and true concern that they've exhibited every time I've been there in our sessions. So with that, I'm going to hit the road with saying thank you so much for being open to some sort of committee being created that could be an adjunct and support. Your attention, Mr.... Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matten, and thank you so much for the work you do. We've heard so many good things about it, it's a great idea. I'm sure you're helping to change lives in a beneficial way. I hope so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peace.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I had a little...
Yeah, you're going to have to state your name correctly. I just stated that you're going to have to be yourself. Thank you.
My name is Greg Peace. I live out on 293 over Harrow's Road. And the reason I got involved with the committee was I've devoted my whole life to this work. My degree's earned in law, society, and justice, criminal justice, and business administration. I ran the halfway houses in Alaska for almost 30 years. And I represented Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Montana, and Alaska for the American Probation and Parole Association. And I represented all private sector halfway houses, for-profit and nonprofit nationwide for the American Correctional Association, of which I was a member of for 20 years. I got involved because I started trying to check out what was going on. I'm a mediator for the magistrate and district courts, so I spend a lot of time in the court building. And because of my work in the past, I wanted to find out what was happening. So I started going around and I visited with Valerie, the probation and parole office, to find out what was happening when they were being released because I ran reentry programs and represented reentry programs nationwide. And she informed me how many were high-risk and how many there were. And all of a sudden I read in the paper that this committee was going to be formed, a Citizens Advisory Committee. And so I came down that day morning and I met all the people that had come down and were interested. And I told them my background and then I driven in from the Mesa to volunteer my time and to try to assist and help out in what seems to be one of the largest budgetary items in any municipality right across the land. Because that's America's business, incarceration. That's what we do more than anyone else. We have a time and an opportunity that has never been before any municipality or any city government or county government I've ever seen. Tomorrow, the President of the United States will go on his criminal justice reform tour where he will travel across the United States addressing the problem in the criminal justice system. He will address courts, mass incarceration, heroin addiction, reentry, and crime reduction. At the state level, we have a Secretary of Corrections who went with the Vera Institute and the John Jay School of Criminal Justice in New York City to Germany to find out what they were doing over in the European countries to address the issue of incarceration, reentry, and chemical dependency. And he's come back with some amazing points of view. And he's our own Secretary of Corrections here in New Mexico. I met with Congresswoman Ben Ray Lujan over the weekend. I've spoken with Martin Heinrich. And the list before you that you have, they also have a copy of that. These are ideas that come from the U.S. Senate Sin Commission, as almost from my background, and are things that the county could be doing to address this criminal justice reform effort that is going right across the country. The opportunity is one that Taos County can go forward to our state and congressional delegations and say, "We want to be in front of that reform movement. And we're volunteering our detention center to be part of it, to not leave us out, to collect some of the money that's on the table for us in this reform effort." The co-occurring disorder rate, heroin addiction rate is right above the board, so we qualify. How about the unemployment rate? That sure is how it qualifies. The housing situation, that qualifies. The state left $25 million on the table last year. Not the state, the governor pocket vetoed $25 million for housing for reentering felons, both male and female. Just let it go away. That's ridiculous. It should be introduced. It's on your notepad there. The behavioral health concerns, transfer the, I guess, the management of behavioral health to Arizona. But I think that we have an opportunity, once again, with the detention center to address those behavioral health and co-occurring disordered issues right here and now. We've got Aboriginal partners all over the state that can weigh in as well. We could make the detention facility a showcase facility. And this is the time to do it. Our state delegation's on board. Our national delegation's on board. It's a bipartisan issue. You don't find issues this big bipartisan often. That's the reason why I volunteered. I want to assist any way I can. So thank you for your time and... If you have any questions, I just feel free to ask. And if you have any questions about the information I handed to you, please get ahold of me.
Sounds good. Thank you. So staff, you know, we've had good suggestions from the board here regarding checking out what other counties are doing. Obviously, and we're going to go through a committee, like our attorney says, we're going to have to understand the makeup that we're going to envision. You know, a couple of suggestions of creating programs, looking for grants. Strikes me that the right group of people working on this could be helpful to what we already have in place. And as Mr. Peace says, there's a lot of changes going on in attempting to improve our criminal justice system.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I'll go ahead and take the direction. And I'll come back at another meeting with a few suggestions based on other counties and other models. I do want to thank the citizens that we have. It sounds like we do have some great people out there willing to help. And I think we do want to engage them for their help. And we appreciate that they want to make us a showcase. I like that idea as well. So this will be back before you at a later meeting with the details requested. And thank you to the public for being here today.
Thank you, Ms. Cordova. Commissioners, if there's nothing further on that, then we will go to Mr. Cordova's report to us on various items.
Chairman, commissioners, thank you. There's a few things I wanted to talk about. The first thing I'm going to go ahead and go through real quick. Deputy manager, Houdin, made sure to alert me to this and wanted me to mention it. Northern Rio Grande Heritage Area has awarded Taos County $20,000 to do lighting upgrades at the old county courthouse, or historic county courthouse. And so we're going to take full advantage of that. We're grateful for that and we're going to go ahead and take that $20,000 and make it part of our upgrade and part of our renovation at the time that we move on. So I wanted to announce that. Next, we'll go ahead and talk about the cemetery. We do have Mr. David Henley, he's here, who we have engaged in order to do the design, patent design of this. He has come, gotten to a point where he has some work to show us. We have a couple site plans and we have a couple renditions of possible gated entryways. I'm going to go ahead and invite Mr. Henley up at this time, discuss a little bit of what he shared with us. But I did want you guys to see that we are making some progress. And then going forward, we are also scheduling some public meetings for the veterans to go ahead and get their input to us. One I know is October 30th, the 1/5 here in the chambers. All veterans are welcome regardless of what designation you are, your VFW, whatever. A veteran, anyone that served, we want your input. Anyone that has...
What day is that?
October 30th.
That's Friday.
Yes, so Friday afternoon in our chambers. And then, is there another one?
We have a, we will have a table set up on Veterans Day at the VFW, the open house.
So on November 11th, Veterans Day, they'll have a booth at the Veterans Open House.
Correct. And I believe that's on Civic Plaza. I'm David Henry, local architect. So as county manager, Cordova mentioned, we're well into this process. Interarchitects is under contract to do several things. The county has chosen to proceed with this very important project which sits prominently on your five-year capital improvement master plan. It's a big line item in the county's budget. Last schedule of values that I looked at, the county was looking at spending roughly $5 million on this project over the next 10 years. It's not going to happen immediately, but it's certainly been identified as an important goal for the citizens, especially the veterans of Taos County. A year and a half ago, Interarchitects produced a comprehensive master plan for the 20-acre parcel that the county has owned for some time. This is done by the Taos Country Club and UMM's Cloudward Campus in Rancho. So it's on the southern edge of Taos County. And where we're at now is we're under contract to design a perimeter fence to secure the property. Obviously, this needs to be a decorative fence, a pretty high-dollar, well-designed object, not just chain link, not barbed wire, something that's decorative. Current thoughts on that is that it's a seven-foot-tall, pre-finished metal picket fence, similar to what you see in other, you'll see a lot used in public parks or institutional spaces that need to be shut off at night. It's a decorative fence. It doesn't have any barbed wire. It doesn't have any keep-out signs, but it is seven feet tall. It curves out at the top to prevent somebody from scaling over it. The primary reason in my mind, and this is something that we need to discuss with the various user groups, but the primary reason that we're putting a fence around the property is to prevent vandalism, prevent people from congregating there when they're not wanted. Want to get started, we don't want people drinking in the cemetery. We want it to be a respectful place and we want to keep people out, so it needs a secure fence. That goes around three sides of the property. It's a 20-acre property. It's a large parcel. It's an expensive fence. But at the western side of the property, the approach that you see, there's a more decorative fence. It's a, we're proposing a five-foot-tall CMU wall that gets stuccoed. It may have a pre-cast concrete cap. You see some snippets of it on the screen in front of you.
Oh, that's cool.
We've come up with three options and it's our intent to present these three options to the various veterans groups here in northern New Mexico, of which I'm finding there are many. Got to be very careful when you're dealing with veterans groups. There's the VFW, there's the DAV, there is, there are state agencies. There are, recently there have been groups formed primarily catering to Iraqi and Middle Eastern war veterans. So there's a whole spectrum of veterans in our state. And sometimes they agree, sometimes they don't. You know, just because I'm presenting my plans to the VFW group on Veterans Day doesn't mean that the disabled veterans group, the DAV, is going to agree with their decisions. And I spoke to Richard Sanchez this morning about this. I've been in touch with the folks in finance. I think the right approach is to have an open meeting inviting all residents of Taos County, whether you're a veteran or not, Friday, October 30th. If you want to express some views on this project, come to this room. We'll put up the boards. We will hear everybody's opinions and we'll kind of determine which of the schemes that you're seeing on your screen we will be moving forward with. And it may be a four scheme. It may be a combination of these three.
See if we can discuss each of these.
See, if we discuss each of these?
In a nutshell, essentially, they may look very different, but they're all trying to do the same thing. There is a main entrance to this property that needs to be secured after hours. That's the vehicle gate that you see in front of you. These will be substantial gates, custom fabricated out of steel. They'll have automatic operators. Depending on how the county chooses to manage this property, there may or may not be staff here. We don't know that yet. So, right now, we're just, we're securing the property, and we're trying to make it look good.
No latte offenses.
Sorry?
No latte offenses.
No latte offenses, no wood elements. The overall concept here is we're designing for a hundred-year life.
I like this.
So, you know, cross, multi-generational lifespan of this project. It's my hope that this property will act as a veteran's cemetery long after I'm gone, long after, long after everybody in this room is gone. So, it's something that hopefully your grandkids and your great-grandkids will be able to Durability, easy to clean. We're trying to be vandal-proof. We're also trying to be monumental and dignified and noble. We want the veterans who are choosing to be buried here to have a final resting place that is dignified, as well as public and notable. It's in a residential area. It's also, this property also brought some very spectacular open spaces. It's not far from the gorge of the Rio Quebla. There's hiking, biking, walking paths all around this property. So, it's also my hope that this, during the day, during when the property is open, it'll be used as a park, and everybody will be welcome. I think I've mentioned this before, you know, it kind of sounds like a strange concept to go have a picnic in a cemetery, but it's commonly done. It's fun. It's a great way to connect with the history of your community, your family, your country. It's something that should be encouraged. We don't want, cemeteries shouldn't be places that are creepy or scary. They should be welcoming, and they should be dual-purpose. Not only are we housing the final remains of our veterans, we want this to be a park for Taos County. And we want it to be a project that Taos County is proud of, and the state can be proud of, and that our nation can be proud of. None of the images that you're seeing are final. These are all quite preliminary, and I apologize, I missed a group of veterans that were here this morning, but I do have in my binder an ex, pretty extensive list of veterans to contact in various different groups. These are veterans of conflicts from World War II through the Iraq wars. So, there's a big diversity there. Lots of different opinions on what it is to, what it means to be a veteran in northern New Mexico. So, we're meeting with these groups. We invite your input. It's been a great project so far. I think it's all something that we should be very proud of. By the time it's all done, I think we're gonna really have a jewel of a project that we can show to the rest of the state, saying, hey, Taos County does things right. We're proud of it. Come and see it.
So, David, this morning, the veterans who showed up, they'd like to chop the teresa and get some grass planted before winter.
Yes, that's a very interesting concept. I encourage that. I've been in contact with the construction administrator for the county, Mr. Sanchez. I think we can accommodate that. Can we do it tomorrow? Probably not. There's gonna need to be some handholding and some coordination between Richard, myself, and the groups that want to volunteer their labor and equipment. Part of the concept for the plan is that we actually preserve and save some of the...
Sage bush.
High mesa landscape that we have. It's not all sage. Some of it is teresa. There's some native grasses in there. We can't just plow it all under. Then we're back to square one, just the twenty acres of dirt, and we don't want that. So, I will work with these groups that want to volunteer their equipment and labor, and we'll get something done. We just need to stake out the areas that we want to save.
Right. So, you know, the hope, of course, is to do it before the sage freezes, and they've got the equipment ready, and...
That's great.
They're kind of anxious to get it moving, and Richard tells me that there's a permit required, and that that could be accomplished in a few days. So, we're wondering, or I'm wondering, when the sage that could be cut could be, you know, approximately identified, what do you think?
Oh, this could happen quite quickly. I said it couldn't happen tomorrow. Probably could. I don't know if you have a, there's a rough digital plan on your screen now. The area within the organic circular road is the area that is irrigated turf, and that's the area that we want. No sage. We just need to somehow go out there with a very large tape measure, hundred-foot tape measure. We'll print out a scaled version of my drawing and lay out that road. Anything within the road, those guys can take out the sage. Anything outside of the boundaries of the road, they should leave alone. I think that can happen this week. Happy to do that. Happy to work with those groups.
Mr. Chairman, Dave, I know that has been brought up before, but a lot of our local cemeteries are quickly running out of space.
Yes.
And so, it would be nice to have, since this is a twenty-acre parcel, an area allowed for the general public.
Yes.
And I don't know if those lots would be sold, or how it would work, but it would possibly, you know, if people want to buy plots into something like this, then it would be additional revenues that could come in into working for the landscape and stuff like that.
Yes, fabulous idea. We've talked about this before. Right now, our goal, at least our target, our ultimate goal is to have this property be sanctified, certified, and blessed by the Veterans Administration, which is a federal agency. They have a lot of rules. Their basic guidelines are that if you want to be buried in a VA cemetery, you have to be a veteran, and there are definitions for that. They're pretty simple, you know, sometime in the military. It's my understanding that spouses are eligible as well, but they draw the line at that. They don't allow children or relatives to be buried in a family plot. So, keep in mind now that the property just to the south, towards County Road V one ten, I believe is what it is.
C one ten.
C one ten, is also one by the county, and it has been set aside for some undetermined use. Conversations that I've had with various county staff lead me to believe that the county is thinking about some type of public building out there, whether it be a police station, substation of the fire department, a park, who knows what. But I think it's a great opportunity to possibly expand our mission and create a small Taos County cemetery that's open to anyone.
Does this, this drawing that you have here, is that, I mean, just five acres, or is it the entire?
That's the entire twenty acres. It's a rectangular plot. So, if you mirror that to the bottom of the page, there's a whole nother twenty acres that makes a forty-acre square. So, we have just as much land to the south, accessed by the same road and directly adjacent to this very noble, well-designed Taos County Veterans Cemetery. I think it's a great opportunity to create a Taos County public cemetery.
The initial request was for, what, five acres? When they sent out that RFP, the Governor Martinez, or there was a need for at least five acres?
The Governor had a strategic veterans cemetery initiative that she was pushing several years ago. I never saw the specific RFP. I did do some research. There are minimum standards. We greatly exceed them. Our parcel is much bigger than some of the other rural communities in the state, what they're choosing to develop. And yet, keep in mind this concept of the in-ground burial sites are only a small portion of the twenty-acre parcel. I don't think it's feasible to irrigate the entire twenty acres. It would use too much water. Our overall plan, if this entire scheme gets implemented, I would like to extend the treated wastewater effluent line that starts at the town sewer plant and currently irrigates the golf course at the country club. I'd like to extend that line to the cemetery, use that water, treated water, to irrigate the landscape of our cemetery.
Would that require water rights?
I don't know. I am in the process.
It would require the purchase of water rights, but one, I mean, the Rio Quebla is right next to the cemetery.
Correct.
So, why not divert the water from the Rio Quebla instead of having to fall away from the sewer line? It's a pot.
I wouldn't divert the water. The water is actually in a canyon. I don't think we could ever develop an asechia or otter over a ditch serving our property.
Or a pump.
What we could do is drill a well. Certainly, Taos County has water rights to its property. If the entire project is built out, it will have several buildings that need potable water. They'll need a well. So, regardless of how we irrigate the landscape, this project and this property ultimately will need a domestic water use well, potable water source.
Well, I, I would definitely, you know, this commission should consider the idea of additional space for a public cemetery.
Great idea.
Santa Fe has both the public and the veterans' cemetery right next to each other. Or maybe it's the archdiocese. I'm not sure.
It's a Catholic cemetery, but you're right. It's essentially the same.
But if we were to get hit with like a major epidemic, you know, that killed a lot of people, we wouldn't have the space to bury people.
It's a great idea.
Our facilities are filled to capacity already.
I think we should talk more about that.
So, I wanted to ask Mr. Chairman, so if, you know, the thought of putting a public cemetery, are we allowed to use the veterans' road as an access? Is that what the rules are? Could we use the road that you're gonna create? And is there any regulation how far away it has to be? Do you know that offhand?
It's my understanding that to be buried on this parcel, if it is taken over and run by the Veterans Association, federal agency, they fund it, they pay for it, they stamp it. If we want to go that route, we cannot open it up to burial by non-veterans or non-veteran spouses.
But I've talked about the adjacent land.
So, the adjacent property to the south...
Commissioner O'Dell?
It's open for whatever use we select.
But could we use the road?
It's my understanding we can, yes. But when you say road, I hope you're not meaning the circulation road within the fence of the cemetery itself.
I guess I am.
So, I guess I want to draw the distinction between what's within the fences of this twenty-acre parcel, which we're targeting as a veterans' cemetery, and then the adjacent property, which is served by, currently it's a dirt road. It's a well-maintained county road, and we have an easement to it. It's a twenty-foot-wide gravel road. We have a legal easement. We can develop a park and a cemetery right there to the south, and it would be served by this same easement that Taos County has.
I would definitely like to see that, Mr. Chairman. I really was impressed with the images, the almost realistic images that you have. Maybe for presentation purposes is to be able to develop images of the rest of the cemetery with the markers and all, the trees and walkways or whatever, like the flagpoles. I don't see a flagpole.
Yeah, I think it's great. You know, as Taos County grows, you know, we're coming out of a slow time. The past eight to ten years have been economically difficult for the northern part of the state. Certainly, real estate development has came to a much slower pace over the past five years than it did if you look at twenty years ago. But the county continues to grow, and I think it's an excellent idea to identify areas for future development as parks, cemeteries, public amenities.
There are so many veterans that came out of northern New Mexico.
Yeah.
And we still have a lot of young men and women that are going, or joining the military, and so someday they will want to come and be buried in Taos. This would be open as well to residents from other areas, not just Taos.
I believe so.
So, that in itself is economic development as well.
Indeed, yep. It's my understanding that if you are a veteran, you can choose where to be buried. It's not a regionally specific thing. You may have been born and raised in Virginia, but you came to Taos, and you want to be buried in Taos, and if you're a veteran, you can make that choice.
Okay, awesome.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one more comment on the gate. What's it called, the threshold, when you drive underneath the...
Arch or...
The arch. I would like to see an arch. I think this is kind of a harsh, male-looking structure, and I'd like to see something a little more feminine.
Okay.
With not such straight curves on that archway. I think an archway is a really good idea, to have one. Like here, I don't like this one. You don't have an archway.
Yeah.
But I like the concept. It expresses kind of grandeur in a tree way. So, if you just keep, that would be my two cents, is making it taller and more...
Duly noted. There are, you've seen three schemes. I like elements of all three schemes. I think where we're headed here, and I've shown these images to quite a few people now, I think we're gonna combine all three of these schemes to come up with the best scheme that really suits everybody's taste. The scheme that's currently on the screen does not have any overhead elements. It just has some very massive stucco piers and decorative gate. The responses that I've received by people that see the images with the overhead elements are very positive. So, it's, I think it's a given that there is some type of overhead element. I'm happy to consider a more organic shape, an arch, a curve, an arc. That's a great idea.
Andrew, how much we have in the bank so far?
We do have one hundred and fifty thousand in capital appropriations, which we will put directly towards the fence and this design. I don't know if that will cover the whole three sides, so we may need to keep asking for some more. But in terms of being able to spend the money that's been appropriated to us, I think you see now that we have a good design that's gonna get us moving on, spending that money sooner than later. Once we do have a consensus from the public and our veterans, we will make a decision and move forward with it, get that money out the door. I truly hope that once we get what we already have out the door, we'll get more, and we'll get more from the state, we'll get more from the federal, and we can continue to develop the rest of it all the way to final sooner than later.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Commissioner O'Dell?
The fencing, how, any ideas that, what that will cost to cover the...
I have some, we're at a finite cost now. I spent last week researching fencing. In the master plan that I did, I identified a cost of forty dollars a linear foot. This is expensive stuff. And we have some known quantity. Let me see if I can quickly pull it up in front of me without wasting any time. So, in the master plan, I identified perimeter fencing, of which we have over three thousand linear feet. That's more than a mile, right?
It's a lot, it's, you know, it's three sides. Two hundred and eighty is a mile.
It's three sides of our twenty-acre parcel. And I identified thirty dollars a linear foot. I spoke to a vendor last week who's kind of the leader in this market sector of this type of fencing. And the type of fence that we're looking at is approximately double, if not triple, that number. So, that, I initially identified a hundred thousand dollars worth of perimeter fence. So that, I initially identified $100,000 over the perimeter fence. I think that number should probably be more like $300,000, unless we choose a more modest, simpler fence, which.
Stay away from the latias.
We may want to. We're not using any wood elements, they just will not stand up to the elements.
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, the surplus monies that we have, I really feel that we should use a little bit of that money towards the veterans' cemetery, so that both the federal and the local and the state folks know that we're serious about this project. I agree. At some point, we can commit some serious funds for this and show the folks that were here today, this morning, earlier, that we're serious and that we want to get it done.
I'll work with county staff to achieve that.
We're about 4.85 million short, but we'll see how that goes. But thanks, David, for the presentation, and thanks for agreeing to get together with those guys, you two, and Andrew and all. It would be great to, that would be a good faith showing that we're serious if we can get some of that done this fall.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Really appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll go ahead and turn to Mr. Sanchez now, we'll see if he has some answers to the earlier questions about the permits and timing and how quickly, maybe tomorrow?
All right, I want to know tomorrow.
Chairman Commissioners, I've spoken with Peter Behill from Soil and Conservation. I've spoken to the Corps of Army Engineers. I've spoken to the quote "surface quality waters" in Santa Fe. I've been on EPA's website and double-checked everything, and Peter doesn't believe because he's trying to call it erosion control, which is a, that is what's being done. But by regulation, specifically in EPA's language, it specifically states that any alteration of vegetation on a construction project is considered disturbing the soil. So that being said, a SWIP permit will be required. Speaking to the people at the Surface Quality Waters, they believe that possibly we could probably have a permit in place three days, five days, working days after we apply. Now, we have to go and we have to bring the top of the ground tools and give best practices and good support and everything, but they said it's a fairly quick process right now, so possibly, I would say, maybe two weeks from today, by the time we go up to the site, decide our best practices, maybe application, but it could happen very quickly.
When is a project technically become a construction project?
When it should break ground.
We're not breaking ground on construction, but we're just doing what Peter said we're doing, which is what, he called it soil erosion.
Erosion control.
It's a construction project when you've gotten your permit, right, or applied for your permit.
I don't think there's a black or white answer to that, but it's the county.
Then let's use the gray answer.
Yeah, the county owns the parcel. We're not going to do any harm. We're going to mow down some sage. We're not going to move any dirt.
Right.
And we happen to be disturbing, the area of sage that we want to disturb is in the middle of our site.
We've only got $150,000, so it's not a construction project. You know, we haven't identified any other monies. It's not a $5-million construction project.
Correct.
And so I, you know, how is it defined as a construction project at this stage?
Generally speaking, and, you know, the airport and some of the other projects are in the process of having to get SWIP permits, and there's the possibility of fines, which can be as high as $35,000 a day. My job description is to inform you of all the risks and possibilities. According to EPA, definitions of disturbing existing vegetation, that's considered disturbing the soil.
On a construction project?
On any project over one acre that's not agricultural. It's not agricultural. But, like I said, that being said, you tell me to stake out, I'll stake it out, and we can have real crystalized talk association. You tell me to apply for the permit, I will apply for the permit, and it's totally up to this commission, and those are the perspectives.
But however you have to apply to the permit with, just make sure of the definition of a construction project.
Okay.
And find out whether or not this is sufficiently before any construction is even reasonably considered, given we've got $150,000.
The people at the surface water quality bureau believe from the description and the ongoing process of it becoming a cemetery that is a construction project, that was their recommendation.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, based on that, I think we can maybe take parallel paths, see if we can stake it out at the same time and apply for the application, and as soon as the application is granted, we'll be ready to move. I would like to see if we can do that, parallel paths, and get it done as soon as the application is approved.
Great.
So that's really all we have on the veterans' cemetery at this time. If there's no more questions, no more comments from the public, I'm going to go on quickly to a couple pictures that we have of our sculpture. The John Swazal sculpture has gotten started. There was a delay, unfortunately, in getting the actual stone from the quarry. As you can see, that's quite a big stone, and so he had run into a couple problems getting the stone, but as you can also see in the pictures, he's getting started, he's moving along. This is a good picture, I like, because you can see the model that was presented to the RFP as to what he's had following and going along. So that's the miniature version, and you can kind of see the hat being formed over here on the right side, and that's going to be the full size of that miniature, so it's pretty exciting. I just wanted to share those pictures with you guys, and actually see that it is getting closer to completion and.
Is that a hat?
It looks like it. Kind of looks like the little sombrero within the figurine, or a smaller scale, so.
But we never used Mexican hats.
We won't call it a sombrero, then. We'll call it a hat.
Chinese?
I know. Richard, what was our estimated completion time? Do we still think we can get this by the fall, or are we?
Probably, Chairman Commissioners, it probably won't happen this fall. Mr. Swazal's one of the few stone artists that still uses 90% hand tools, and he believes that realistically it's going to be a spring install, because I just don't see the estimate of how deep and the basework that he needs required to get it in place. Artists' schedules don't seem to work very well, and the stone quarry, the quarry had told them it would be four to six weeks, ended up being eight to 10 weeks. It's a large piece of stone, they put it in production, and that's when they can deliver it, and that's been the major delay.
Where is it going to be placed?
What's that?
Where is it going to go?
It's going to go here, in the center square of the courtyard. That'll be another agenda item about the relocation of our dedication plot for the complex.
A back room or something. It's fine with me. Have the right people on it. Should have no people.
And so, and then our other sculpture that has been graciously donated to the county is still being held up by administrative probate court. So as that works its way through probate, then it'll be a better opportunity when we'll bring that sculpture and place that in our area. And also, another quick note, art that we, we're moving forward on the landscaping on the outside of the complex. So we have a company in place to start doing that work, and we're going to do as much as we can here in the last few weeks of good weather and get ready for the springtime.
Long go, William.
Yes.
And on the other statue, it's a Teddy Bruce statue, and he passed away, and so that's why it's being held in probate court.
And that's all I have for you on manager's report. I know the Commissioner wanted to add on to that, to the Commissioner's report, so.
Thank you. Let's see, I just have a couple questions, let's see. Can I get a copy of the RFP that is proposed to be published on the community centers, so that I can just do a bullet outline to the people of El Moro Seco?
Sure. I'll send it to the entire commission.
Okay, that'd be great. And then we can email the veterans who were here this morning and let them know where we're at with that. I don't know if you have an email list of Francis and those guys, but.
Well, do we kind of reach out to most of those? I think we can get at least Francis, get ahold of him, and make sure he can disseminate the information.
Great. And what are we going to do about our auditing of the jail responsibilities? I know that that's something that we have to do. What's the plan? Do we want to do it as a group at a later date and invite the public? Or do we want to do it as a group and not invite the public and interpret the statute that way? Or do we want to do it individually? So I can make plans.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think inviting the public is kind of out of the question in terms of the safety and security of the complex that we have across.
You make sense.
The bigger the group, the more logistically challenging it gets to have a tour through our facility as well. We can handle it a couple ways. You can individually, or no more than two of you at a time, can head over there and we can arrange tours with our administrator, and you can fill out the survey form, and then we can come back into a public meeting in the future and discuss each of your individual observations, and you can kind of compile a report at that time, is one option. Or if you certainly want to do it as a group, you can take that approach and throw caution to the wind and the Open Meetings Act, and I don't know if that's what you want to recommend either, but those are the two options besides dealing with the issue.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
And, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation is that we not take the risk of violating the Open Meetings Act, that we, it's not that much more inconvenient for commissioners in numbers of two or fewer to make arrangements, jump into view it, and then we skip to a public meeting when the entire commission gets its report.
Okay, great. And the report will be developed from us filling out questionnaires or something like that? How are we going to develop the report?
As I understand it, there was an evaluation form, I think, of each of your.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have the evaluation form on my area, but I'll share that with you. I'll send out an email with that evaluation form attached, and each of you will have that when you do get the opportunity to go over there and do your tour. Please fill out the evaluation form, and then I think when we come back into a future meeting in a public forum, we'll go ahead and make a comparison of each of your evaluation forms, and we can use that as our report.
All right. And we want to do this during the calendar year, 2015?
Let's set a date today. I think we need to have it done before the end of the calendar year, for sure. The sooner the better, probably before the holidays would be a nice, just so that we can make sure we're staffed correctly and we don't have any issues with that. So maybe by our second meeting in November, if that's possible, that gives us about a month for everybody to get in there and do their individual tours.
And when I decide, like, my date, I just send it to you, and you work it out?
Please, on the email I send to you guys, I'll go ahead and lay out a couple parameters, and then, yes, please just respond to me, and we'll do our best. And I think we can accommodate one on one or two on one a lot easier than a large group, so we probably can turn that around relatively quickly based on your request and get you in there. I don't know about lunch on the individual, because I have to kind of schedule it around the meal time if you want to have your meals, but that's probably still.
Do something wrong in the city limits and I'll send you there.
Mr. Chairman, while we're on the topic of the jail, I would like to see in the next commission meeting, I'd like to show the commission the exit survey that Ms. Gonzalez had worked on, and see if we could move that forward as a policy.
All right, Commissioners, if we have nothing else for our county manager, then we'll be on to IMC. Commissioner Romero giving us an update on the Mexico Association.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the NMAC board meeting on a quarterly basis, and this time it took place on Friday in Socorro, New Mexico. And there were a couple of items that took place. First of all, as the Association of Counties appointed a committee that revised the bylaws, I was on that committee, and the bylaws have been revised and approved by the NMAC Board of Directors, and those will be, I'm sure, posted here fairly soon on the NMAC website and disseminated to the county managers, so that they can distribute to our commissioners and other elected officials. Second of all, we do have a new president. His name is Tyler Massey. He is a treasurer from Ydaklo County, and he was elected by the board on Friday as well. He replaces Clyde Ward, as you all remember, last summer. Clyde had won the position, but he was appointed recently by Governor Martinez to the state land office, and so Tyler moves up from vice president to president-elect, and he will start his term in June. One last piece, Commissioners, is the New Mexico Truth Program. We were given a very nice video presentation by Rebecca, who used to work for the Town of Red River. She did a lot of promotional work, trying to get people to visit the Enchanted Circle, and then she was appointed by Governor Martinez to the Tourism Board. She's the Secretary of Tourism Board, and she's done a really great job. She created the New Mexico True Program, and she showed this nice video presentation, and there were a couple of entities or counties that were not present in this, and one of them was Taos County. It kept showing all these beautiful areas of Carlos Bad and other counties, but nothing from Taos, and so I asked about that, and she said, you guys have not come on board. And so, this is a copy of the magazine that they put out recently. I hope that our staff can maybe look into what it costs, if anything, to get on board with New Mexico True. They do a lot of promotional pieces, a lot of billboards, as much as I hate billboards, a lot of video, a lot of commercials that work at bringing economic development, tourist bases out of Colorado, Wyoming, but more so from Texas. And so she really feels that that's the reason why we're seeing a lot of tourism in New Mexico, is that all of this is finally working, and we should get on board to do something about it.
We are on the back cover. I think we're on the front cover, too. I think that's the scheme I had. I mean, there's a full page out.
Probably is. We're buying advertising space, but there's other benefits from getting listed on New Mexico True as well, including TV commercials and other stuff.
Maybe we can look into that. Mr. Chairman, if we could go ahead and give a look at that, and bring that back in a future meeting, to bring up what requirements are and the cost.
And that is it.
Oh, sorry.
Chairman, Commissioner Romero, we met with Secretary Latham, myself, Lisa, and manager Michelleetta.
About a month ago.
About a month ago, too. She was going to talk more formally with the county when she comes up in November about signing the, becoming, Taos County to become part of the Mexico True. She's going to be speaking to the 10 group at their regular meeting on, I think, November 18th. So I think that's what she was telling us, that she would sit down with us formally and get us signed up for the program.
Is there a cost to it? I'm sure there is.
There is some cost to Taos being a part of it, but not to be a part of it on a basic level, it's not, just for the bigger picture.
And then we did tell her, when we met with her, that they're already using Taos County images, because most of the images from the pueblo, it's Taos pueblo, but the gorge and the Rogers, the St. Francis Church and Rogers, those are all images within the county.
Right.
So they go and get attributed to the town a lot of times, but there are a lot of images that are within the county.
Well, that's good to hear, because the video presentation that she showed mostly was from other counties. I didn't see one Taos pueblo or.
It's in the book that we heard, it's all the pictures from the towns.
And then, one of the filmings that she has done, which Governor Martinez participated, Los Reyes River Runners took the governor, and they did a film segment on their Sunday program for that. And there had been another TV production that was at the, I think, at the pueblo. So there has been some coverage, but nothing that would say is Taos County.
No, it's Taos, right. Well, thank you for the update, Commissioner, and thank you for. Thank you for the update, Commissioner, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With the Association of Counties, we appreciate it.
And so the governor had requested a press conference that we put a New Mexico True emblem on our cards. So I guess we need to find out how we can do that, if we can just do that, or if we have to pay before we use their emblem. But if you could just find out, because I'd like to have it on my cards.
Well, if there's nothing else under item 11, then let's go on to the last item, which is 12, legal matters.
Mr. Chairman, there is one item. Could I do a brief report? Can we amend the agenda just a quick report?
I think we'll need the agenda amended, if we're not going to make any decisions.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, then let's amend it. I'll second that. I'll vote.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Blinken?
So I regretfully have to tell the commission that we did not get our relief tree grant. We were declined in a letter to Ms. Griegeau. It said, we appreciate your proposal, but your project location is considerably more rural than the projects typically funded. The application did not score favorably in public benefit and outreach, education potential because of this location, and the ability to maintain temporary irrigation and maintenance long-term in a remote project location was of concern to the reviewers. So unfortunately, I hate to bring this news, but we did not get the grant.
All right, well, worth the effort.
We'll plant our own trees.
Under 12 legal matters, and this is regarding pending threatened litigation on the healthcare partners contract. We can go into executive session on this. Is that what you recommend, Mr. Malone?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so...
Move to go into executive session, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion going to executive session under Open Meetings Act exemption 1015-1H7. Call for a vote.
Vice Chair Fendro?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Blinken?
Yes. Thank you. Shouldn't take very long. We'll just stay here again for a short, very short. Commissioner, is the motion come back? So, second.
Vice Chair Fendro?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Blinken?
Yes, Mr. Malone, will you give us a report?
Yes, the county commission met in executive session pursuant to Open Meetings Act exemption 1015-1H7 to discuss a threatened and pending litigation involving healthcare partners. Only that matter was discussed, no action was taken.
Move to approve the report due by our chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Vice Chair Fendro?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Blinken?
Yes. We have a motion to adjourn. So, Mr. Chairman, second.
Vice Chair Fendro?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Blinken?
Yes.